Good morning, everyone. I'll call the May 23rd, 2017 Board of Supervisors meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. We have Mr. Tim Irvin from Wickl Baptist Church here to do our invocation. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious Lord, we thank you first for the rain and for the new day. We thank you for the ways that you guide and direct us. We also ask that as we gather together to decide things for this county, that you would bring wisdom, that you would bring insight, and that your will would be done. Lord, we thank you for all the gracious things you have done for us, and we thank you for those who are so willing to serve for this county. May you bless them, may you strengthen them, and may you encourage them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, welcome, this morning. We have Mr. Willis to go present a resolution.
Are you nervous? You're a public speaker, come on up. Sucks getting old. Come on up. Congratulations, and a freshman at that, wow. All right. Whereas Georgia with High School freshman Jessie Moore and her Sirius Duo interpretation partner, Senior Isaac Wheeler, completed an outstanding 2016-2017 season, and whereas Ms. Moore and Mr. Wheeler surpassed teams from five other schools to win the Conference 46 championship, and whereas the team competed in the Region 1A West championship, in which 25 schools were represented, defeating six other groups to win their category, and whereas the duo advanced to the 2016-2017 Virginia High School League Group 1A State Forensics Championship, and whereas the pair's presentation of a poignant story about his teen and his relationship with his autistic younger sister bested seven other teams, capturing the 2016-2017 Sirius Duo Interpretation State Championship title. And whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend Jessie Moore and Isaac Wheeler for their dedication and hard work. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors present this resolution to Jessie Moore, 2016-27 Sirius Duo Interpretation Forensic State Championship in recognition of their achievements, and be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted 23rd day of May, 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adopt With County Resolution 2017 dash O four.
Have a second. I have a motion and second any discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Okay, moving on with our agenda, citizens' time with Ms. Linda Myers, speaking on one subject.
Ms. Myers, are you going to have citizens' time at the following meeting tonight, or do you want to hear about what we have?
You've got three minutes with the meeting right now.
Okay.
I mean, there'll be open to the public hearing, time to speak.
There will be?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll give you something to think about between now and then. What are we going to do about our healthcare costs? On pages one, two, and three of our budget, healthcare costs for those just three departments are over $88,000 a year. Has anybody given thought to some sort of a collective with the Association of Counties or something to reduce healthcare costs? So that's a question. And then, of course, we've got something new on the agenda here. It's called a hybrid disability insurance. Like, what is that, and why do we need it? Is it mandated? Or is this something perhaps that the employees should be picking up? Also, with the increases in health insurance cost, it is outrageous that you slap the public with a increase in salaries for the employees. It's either one or the other. So they're either going to pay a percentage into their health, for their healthcare costs, which are absolutely dormant, or they get a raise. So it's either one or the other, because the county can't, the general public cannot be picking up those kind of costs. Also, on page 86, the school board administrative clause has gone up, over $155,000. What's going on with that? On page 68, if you'd make a note and address that this evening. And we'll see, hopefully, the public will be coming out tonight, and see you at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Mr. Cox? Mr. Cox?
Yeah, really, Cox, hopefully, like I say, ain't nothing I can say about hopefully what ain't always been said. But about the bridge, I just wonder if we could get Bristol to give us a waiver on that environmental thing, to put the cupboards in there so we can get in and out. I know you ain't got the money for the bridge, is what to say. If they could put the cupboards in there, get a waiver on environmental, it would get us in and out easier. But we just have to sit and wait and see, but really, we need the road blacktop more than we need the bridge, Johnson, because it is a bad shape. So, appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you for coming, Mr. Cox. Anybody else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here and none, I'll close citizens' time and go into our agenda. Next item is payment of, I mean, improvement of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 9th.
Can I make the motion we could?
Have a second. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices or obtain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion and second. Any invoiced? Any board member would like to question or pull out? Here and none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Moving right into old business, B.D.O.'s six-year plan discussion. Mr. Russell? You have a copy at your...
I think we did a pretty good job of putting it in, catching load, and it's interesting getting roads put on the project. And we'll skip straight to page three of that plan. We're looking at the new project, we're discussing the old project in the public hearing. And on page three, the projects we added this year, what was proposed, the first one is Back Road, and that is a 1.1 mile section from Straight Spring Frank to Crip Creek Road. The next project we're looking at is Glade Road, that's 4/10ths of a mile, and that's from Hogback to King Neil Lane. And the next project is almost 2/10ths section, that's on Goleian Fork, that will complete the hard surfacing on that route as well. The next project is Hogback Road, that's a 1.4 mile project on page four, the next project, Kings Chapel Road, and that goes from where the pavement currently ends and takes it on out to Butterfly Lane, it's 2/10ths of a mile. Next project is Mills Creek, that will be extending the hard surfacing from Smith Road up to Heather, half mile. Then we have Walters Road, 4/10ths of a mile, that's a dead end off of Glade Road. Walton-Virrs Road, 4/10ths of a mile, and that's from Sanders Mine Road, south down to that first category, as we discussed in the last public hearing, so. That's nine projects, a little over a million dollars' worth, so pretty good made in my opinion, so that's, I think I'll catch your buck, y'all, if you were, if there's questions on the plan, so if y'all had any questions, Dr. Horni.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Russell?
I'd like to, this fixes a lot of smaller, kind of residual type things that have been left there, but I, I could do good, give you a good time.
Get a lot of things covered, a lot of roads fixed, fixed, but that's a lot of money. Gene, Floyd, Joe, Martin, Steve, y'all, any other questions for Mr. Russell?
Jeff, can you give us an update depending on weather, what you think will happen this summer?
As far as routes that we're going to be working on?
Yeah, what's your plan for this summer?
We're hoping to get, David, correct me if I'm wrong, look, David's my maintenance manager, he works with the headquarters directly. We're hoping to get, of course, we're working on Myrtle Lane now, both of the Sharon Drive and both of the new Bethels. That's kind of what we're looking at this year, right?
Yeah, Crip Road.
When you do a job like that, you have to use your crews in both Fort Chittle and Speedo, though, on the same job?
No, no, not on that. Normally, I've got some area headquarters in With County, the one at Fort Chittle, or the one at Whitfield, and the one at Speedo. Right now, Speedo, are they working on Crip Road right now?
No.
Speedo's working on Crip Road, and we have Whitfield working on Myrtle Lane, even though that's outside of their area, but the way the projects are following the priority right now, all the projects are hitting in Speedo's area, so we're using Whitfield to help them, but they're all doing all the same project.
You're probably wrong, but I thought previously we were going to get that short section of Major Grand because it was funded. That's not going to happen this year?
It's not funded this year, Joe, but, well, it will be fully funded next year, but now what I'm anticipating, and I'm not making a promise, but I talked to the guy the other day, I think that is going to get approved for the high-volume unpaid roads program. And if so, according to when they award that, the C.T.B. has to meet and vote on it either in June or July, I believe, but once that funding is there, once we get, and they're working on the straight line sketches, they're working on the permits right now to get the damage fixed, but once we get all that, we can go to work on it.
Well, the reason that, that little piece is a hot topic, I've had calls from everybody named Bishop, that we can't do anything about dust control because they're going to fix the road this year, which I've told them, you don't want to put treatment down to control the dust if we're going to try to pave it, it'll only soften the subgrade, but that sounds like two different things, that we can't control the dust, but it's not going to happen this year, so hopefully it can, one or the other. I would ask them to please water the road with their water hose and quit calling you. If you're going to fix the road, you can't put chemicals down and then fix the road without a lot more pug meal based on, so.
I talked to the area headquarters, let them know last week, and told them to go ahead and treat that through that area for dust control.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we don't want, don't want them eating dust all summer long, so we are going to treat it, and the good thing about it, we do, we are setting Major Grand up with plant mix just due to the amount and type of traffic it's on.
Mm-hmm.
It will withstand it a lot more so than the normal surface treated.
It will save you a lot of maintenance work in the future, all these little roads. When you're just doing these 2/10ths miles, a lot of people won't realize you've got to tram that motorator all the way out there to do a few hours' work, and that costs money to go there to do that little bit of work.
Glade and Hogback is two ideal, what you're talking about, they're two ideal projects, you know. We're completing hard surfacing of two roads, then, like you say, we don't have to run motorators up there, so that'd be a success as well as you all and the public.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Cox just asked, after all the rain and everything, if you don't mind having him check Pope Road, he said it's blocked out, but he said, you know, they ain't no use in fixing it till, he understands that it ain't no use in parting on it, so after everything.
I totally might pass it on.
Gentlemen, if you all are satisfied with the plan, there are a couple items that would need to take place, would need to adopt the With County Resolution 2017-05 for the proposed plan and priority list, and then would need to adopt 2017-06 through 2017-04, which deems the roads that have been added to the plan as rural rustic roads.
The overall plan would be in one motion, can all the rest of it be in one motion as well?
I do not see where, I think I would do the resolution for the approval of the plan.
Right, as a separate, I understand that.
And then the others, and for the other ones, I don't see a problem just naming those roads.
So it's just the details of the overall plan. I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept With County Resolution 2017-05, you know, the overall plan for the six-year plan.
Have a second. Second. Have a motion and second any discussion. Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
And Mr. Russell, I would ask you just to confirm when you're adopting the plan of rural rustic, just the sort of stipulations you're putting on that road? Are you indicating limiting development along those roads?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept resolution 2017-06 through 2017-014, adding the additional roads as rural rustic against the six-year plan.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second.
A second.
Have a motion and second any discussion.
I've got a question. Based on what the county administrator said, is that forever that there can't be any developers? There's a time limit on Jeff. I mean, we're rushing into doing a lot of miles of road here, and if we're restricting the landowners that they can't develop that property, I'm not sure we want to go there.
Ladies, I'll go ahead and read over, not on my benefit, for the freshman member matured as well, but says, whereas the code of Virginia permits the hard surfacing of certain unpaid roads deemed to qualify for designation as rural rustic roads, and whereas any such road must be located in a low-density development area and have not more than 1,500 vehicles per day, and whereas the Board of Supervisors of With County desires to consider whether such route should be designated rural rustic, whereas the Board is unaware of pending development, that will significantly affect the existing traffic on this road, and whereas the Board believes that this road should so be designated due to its qualifying characteristics, and whereas the road is in the Board's six-year plan, now be it therefore resolved, the Board hereby designates this road a rural rustic road, and request the Residence Administrator of the Department of Transportation concur, and be it further resolved, the Board requests that this road be hard-surfaced to the fullest extent proven, be approved within the existing right-of-way, and dense lines preserve as much as possible the adjacent trees, vegetation, side slopes, and rural rustic character along said road. And Joe, to answer your question when I read this, my interpretation is that the Board is unaware of pending development that will significantly affect the existing traffic, so therefore I see no stipulation on something that might happen in the future.
Okay. Scott, do you agree with that?
I do.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anything else you want to, if Mr. Russell's here, does anybody got anything they need to request from Mr. Russell? I know the requests for Pope Road, if you looked at, anybody else?
No, but I'll thank you. I called, sent an email to someone, called me about Four Seasons Road, that curve right there, and of course I emailed you all, and then maybe a couple weeks later, I got a call.
You want to talk about trying to get the code?
Thank you. You all, but.
This year, instead of putting it on, repaving that code?
Thank you. You would, please, I would appreciate it. And I drove by there yesterday just to look at it again, it's, it's made it a lot safer.
Anybody else?
The pavement from Route 52 over Austinville, when did you tell us that was going to be paved?
Is that next year or no?
I think so.
Which section?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Which section? The 52 over Austinville.
Oh, the 618?
Yeah, 618.
Yeah, yeah, 618.
Next year's.
Next year. In them curves, it was pretty dangerous through there, you know. Seeing like from San, him daddy's.
We looked at that.
We went and looked, and I believe we got a request from Stephen on the little section through there, that there's been quite a few accidents, especially from Waitrose, and we're going to, we went and looked at that, I spoke with Traffic Engineer Yersey, and we're going to try to look at repaving that one-mile stretch through those curves, we're seeing we're having some trouble with people leaving the road, so we're going to look at that section, see what we can do pretty quick, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank y'all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is appointments. New River, Mount Rogers workforce development, I don't think we have any, it's a business representative, and I don't think anybody had anything at this time, and Mr. Lester's still working on the Recreation Commission's appointment in West Wickl. So unless anybody has an appointment for any one of them, we'll move on into the agenda. Ms. Myers, we have anything else under old business to take care of?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any other old business.
Okay, new business, treasurer's report. Ms. Gwen?
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, we're starting to hear you in the back, just to let you know.
Now.
It may just be my ears, I'm not sure.
It may be turned down. I don't know.
Sit on back to reveal the curtain. Usually we can hear you really well, but today we're struggling a little bit.
Maybe it's, it'll get better here shortly.
Maybe you're not awake yet, maybe that's what it is. Okay, um, let's start now, hold on, a few more. Okay, on your financial report that I think we probably handed out to you here this morning, we're still trying to work through a few bumps in the road that we were late getting the month of April closed down and getting reports ready. The general fund account balance is $38,925,444. The consolidated account contains a balance of $55,831,630. Also note on this report, and the additional handout that you received earlier, a two-page handout, kind of coincides with what I'm getting ready to point out to you, but on the financial statements, what we have done since we've changed systems to Tyler Munis as far as tax is concerned, we've broadened the general ledger breakdown and broken out the years by tax type, so you'll notice on there, for example, it would be four pages over for you, the number at the bottom is actually page number one, but it's the fourth page in the packet. For current real estate taxes, for example, at the top, we have a budget line item in our year-to-date revenue that is shown a month-to-date of zero. What we've done is instead, that amount that's only included in there is going to be in those accounts that are below that, starting with the fourth one down, that's titled Delinquent Real Estate Tax 2002 and Franchise 2016. We have broken out all the tax revenues like that on a per-year basis for real estate, personal property, mobile phone, machine and tool, margins capital, we've broken everything out, including license fee as well, just so that we can better see exactly what we are collecting across the years, instead of having everything in one lump sum as far as, of course, current is in fact 2016 tax, but delinquent tax before included all years, for example, now it's 2015 in that, so we've broken that out. So you'll see that as a difference on there, but then going to the two-page handout that I think maybe Mr. would have handed out to you earlier, or maybe Mr. Bayer, this brings you more up to date with what that breakdown is, so it shows you on the first page there what our account balance is as far as our delinquent real estate taxes, the second column is what we've collected, the third column is adjustments, which would be like exonerations, things like that, that could be an issue, and then our change for the month in the ending account balance. This report actually just came into formation this morning, so there's some tweaking to do on it. I spoke with Mr. Grant this morning, when he presented this to me, and we talked about a few changes that we're going to make on that overall, but it breaks all of that down for you. On personal property taxes, the first item says delinquent personal property taxes legacy, that is the amounts coming off of our old tax system. So any real estate legacy, that's going to be anything coming off of the old system, which is our home bearing tax system that we've had for many years. But that kind of breaks all of that out where we're at on the collections. So for the month of April, just on the tax side, we collected over $176,000. The first part of the month was pretty busy, it kind of dropped off, but I believe we're kind of getting settled in and pursuing some other things. B&amp;B stops, I hope to have on May 1, that did not work out as planned, so my goal now is January 1, so hopefully we'll be getting those on, and I'll start bringing in a little bit more regular one. That's pretty much what I have. Anybody have any questions on?
You said January 1.
I mean, June 1, sorry, January, excuse me, June 1, whatever next month is, that's like a week and a half away.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwen?
One quick one.
Sure.
Does it ever get, in a business, you get to a point in time where you write off accounts receivable that you're not going to collect because it's costing you more to try to collect it?
What we do, real estate 20 years is what you keep on your books, so for example, on the two-page report that you have, the 1996 taxes, that whole $97 and 20 cents, we'll be writing that off.
Okay.
By the end of the fiscal year. Personal property is a five-year timeframe, so the 2011 will be written off on personal property.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Unless there's a judgment, if there's a judgment that we have within either, well, within circuit court, judgment's there, we'll keep those on the books, and we'll keep those tax bills on the books, but if there's no judgment... But if there's no judgment, they'll drop off.
Ms. Gwynn, on your old report then, basically where the $10,500 was budgeted and we collected $10,360 to date, the old report would show the $130,000 for the delinquent 2016 in that number, so we've collected $10,490 towards the current years.
Let's see, that would be the $10,360 was...
The $130?
Yes, $130, yes.
So we've come, we've almost hit our budget for the real estate.
Probably I have a question on this two-page report. The very nice thing I guess is the motor license fee. I see that you've got the legacy, which is over $23,000. That's, everything is accumulated up to 2013.
Yes. Previously with this, and I think this will help you, I apologize for cutting you off, with the motor license fees, every year those fees just dumped into one account, so we never had really a good idea of what we collected as far as what was assessed to the taxpayers for each tax year individually. So with that motor license fee legacy, that basically has everything. So someone could have walked in two months ago and paid the tax bill for 2014, 15, and 16, and had one license fee on all three years, but that $60 we dumped into that one account. We had no way of going back and putting the 2014 $20 fee into that line item, 2015 into the 2015 year. So we've broken that out now, so we can really more accurately see what we are collecting.
I guess, one question I'm asking, I know that, you know, that we told that the sticker figure, the license fee was, you know, was a good, was a collect of taxes, but a lot of this legacy was when we actually had the stickers. And, you know, 2013, 2014, 15, everything, that amount has gone down drastically, I mean, it is...
This account is, what I would say, a little odd, because what it is, is where everything was in the one account, it's now been broken out every year, so those actual beginning account balances does not reflect what has been collected in the past. Hold on, let me get just something else here. Because this would have been what our account balance was as of April 1, when we broke these line items out on an individual basis.
But I mean, in 2013, are we saying that most all of the revenue for the license fees was collected?
No, for 2013, we still have $13,700 and, well, $13,700 still hanging out there on license fee.
So that's for the individual...
Year.
Year, okay.
This line item is a little weird right now, because where everything was all in the one, and we're trying to break it out, so it's a little odd at the moment, but I was trying to find...
On that one, it's on page two.
Yes, because for example, we had budgeted for 2016 $330,000 on the motor license fees. But year-to-date, which is going to include years all the way across the board, as of March 31st, we've collected $364,500.
Okay, so this, these adjustments like $60, $60, $300, and those are not real dollars, I mean...
Well, those are adjustments that the Commissioner's Office would have made if someone come in, and we still have the issue, someone is charged a license fee for accounting, but they actually live in a town with the old town, they'll retreat. And so they've already paid that fee, but we have to adjust that off. And even if they haven't paid it, it still has to be adjusted off, because the Commissioner's Office is issuing exoneration to clear that.
And the collections column, I'm not sure I understand what that is.
Okay, the collections is what we've collected here in the month of April.
Your statement?
Yes, for both pages. And then about, well, before the motor license fee begins, on that second page of that report, it's showing a total of 176, 159, 61. That's what tax revenue we have collected for April, just tax, not license fees. If you drop down to the bottom of that next column on license fees, we've collected a little over $16,800 on license fees for April. We're still a work in progress. Let's say this is just something that's come about in the wee hours of this morning, but still a few things we need to get worked out on the ledger side with tax, posting into the GL, and just a few posting issues that we've had recently. We've had to make changes because the account was set as wanting the wrong revenue account to post, and so some of those we still need to make adjustments, but we're trying to get worked through those.
Is it going some better?
It's going. I'll say some better, but everybody's definition of some better is entirely different. You know, we're getting there, it's just trying to, still struggling to find our way to where we can, we feel like quickly find someone and be able to wait on them. I think when we get the D and D stops uploaded and that shows on the Tyler system, that will help us, because right now, when someone comes in, we're still basically on personal property, having to go to the old system to see if we have a hold on the D and D. And if we are, that way you can parse into that, make sure that gets released without being worn to D and D. And when we say, oh, sorry, there's another $25 fee, you get that released, even though you just paid your taxes, we didn't see that, because those D and D stop moves did not carry over to the new system.
So will things make it difficult right now, which would be the same switching any systems, is that you still got to kind of reference both systems to get the full picture right now, but eventually it will all move to, okay?
And we do have some upcoming changes. Unfortunately, I am leaving one of my employees in the office. I have a lady that, she came to us from the banking world, and she's chosen to go back because obviously more money than what we can pay or pay to see her leave, but I entirely understand her reasoning for leaving. So we are getting ready to be one person short, but we'll get someone else in there, and they're not going to know where we've been, and they're not going to know any different than Tyler at this point, so we're, kind of changing a little bit down there. But that's all I've got. Anything else?
He may have been, Joe.
One of the ones that I always pick on is a revenue stream from lodging tax and from meals tax. Now, this report was effective April 1, is that right, or was it April end?
This is April 18, on the big report that you have on this report, that's April 1.
On page two. So if you look at projected budget under item 11003 and object 31271, start under that 801, lodging tax, you had it projected at $65,000, correct? That was in the budget. And at the last of April, you collected $67,000. So that would indicate that travel is up and people are renting more rooms. You go down some extra. What is additional lodging tax?
It's the 2% and 3%. It's where we have the 2% that the state lodges, and then we have the 3% extra on top of it. It used to all be in the same line together, and it has been broken out. So the total lodging tax we expected to receive this year was $165,000. So Lori, I would ask you to look at that, because it looks like maybe some of that needs to go from the base to the additional to break that out.
We don't make that entry into that additional account, we can handle through planning.
Okay.
We post into base, and then that transaction's done on an adjustment basis.
And that was something that was broken out a couple of years ago, and the purpose was to show that additional amount that came in, the exact amount that was.
I heard you, but I don't understand a thing you just said.
Okay.
What is additional, then what is base? Let's start with base.
Okay. I'll do it on a simple number of $100,000 right now, as it's basically, if our budget was $100,000, we would have budgeted $40,000 of that to be base. And what that is, is the first 2% tax that we charge for the lodging tax goes into base. And then we have the ordinance that had added an additional 3%, that that 3% would be used for tourism. So the total was 5% of the tax. So $40,000 would go to base, $60,000 would go to additional, is how that was broken out. And that gave us the ability to attract that additional revenue separately.
So you're saying the base is the general fund?
Both of them go into the general fund. It was just the amount that was above the 2% had to be used for tourism, for tourism-related industries. And a few years ago, it started getting broken out to track the amount that was specifically coming in to go towards tourism, tourism-related industries. It's nothing more than a tracking mechanism is what it is.
Okay, so we still had two months to go on this report.
Yes.
And just a little rough arithmetic there, if you combine those two, you would be at about $115,000, and you projected $165,000. So it's possible that that number will get a lot closer by year-end. Now let's go to the next one, meals tax. It appears to me that meals tax, based on flow at the interchanges, shouldn't be down. We see the Golden Goose is full all the time, all the other mainline restaurants, I'm talking about national chain restaurants, some of them are full during the daylight hours and late into the night, and they stay open all night. Do we have any method? This is just on the big ones. I know we don't have a good method on checking on the others, but on the chain restaurants that are open 24 hours, is this a voluntary tax, or is there any kind of audit that happens?
I want to make one point just really quickly. Keep in mind, this is going to be, for both lodging and meals, this is going to be for tax that these businesses charged and collected for us, that's essentially going to be for the months of June of last year through March of this year. Because, for example, May 20th is when the meals and lodging tax returns and payments are due for the month of April. So we're getting more into the heavy travel season, so there's the possibility, of course, now with school being out, or getting ready to be out, that money that comes in now for the month of May, or comes in in May for the month of April, June for the month of May, could be significantly higher. I'm adding to the confusion.
I don't believe I could pause that on chalkboard.
The businesses have 20 days from the month end.
Okay.
Submit to, lodging tax comes directly to the Treasurer's Office. Meals tax goes directly to the Commissioner's Office, and the payments come over to us. But any restaurant, any hotel that collected that additional tax during the month of April had until May the 20th, which was Saturday, so a lot of it's probably getting in the mail today, because a lot of them mail it that day. So like yesterday, today, tomorrow, we're going to be getting a lot of those payments in for lodging and meals that were actually charged in April.
Okay, I understand that against the collection side, but my real question, does the state or the county have any method of auditing whether people are paying their taxes? Now, I'm going to the second tier...
You can do an audit.
...which is our campgrounds, which a lot of them were not informed until recently they were supposed to charge. Some motels didn't know they were supposed to be collecting taxes. Some of the small food vendors don't collect taxes. So there's money there that some people are paying, and other people are not paying. Is there any way to fix that?
Ms. Barker may want to comment on this as well, but I don't think the change is where we have issues of anybody paying. Quite honestly, it's your mom and pop locations, especially on the meals tax side, because I work with a person in her office when they, when Faye's employees, you know, they can't get the people to pay, I send my last little letter to them and say, this is the deal, if you don't pay by this date. So, you know, it's your smaller locations that we have trouble with, because they're collecting that, and they're using that money essentially to pay their bills and do whatever, and, you know, they don't care if they're six months behind on paying us, or two months, or whatever, until they get that letter in the mail, and you threaten to take a warrant out on them, turn it over to Commonwealth's Attorney, and let them handle it from there, and then they start paying. But that's where our struggles are, are through the small businesses, unfortunately.
Well, I believe that, but it's still, you basically go off of whatever corporate sends you that we owe, based on room rentals.
You see a difference, of course, in looking at those returns. You see a lot of difference in their gross sales, because January is always a slow month, generally February is a slow month. But by the time you're getting the paperwork in in April for the month of March, it starts picking back up. But really March through, I would say sales march through really December, that are then submitted to us the following month, or each month respectively, those are your higher months. January is here where you're always slow months.
What month would you be able to tell us what those three numbers were at the end of that fiscal year, whatever it is, whatever month is when they're due? If I followed you right, this will show up after our fiscal year is when they're due. I don't understand any of that, but that's what I understood you say. So when will you be able to say, in 1917, or, excuse me, we'd all be dead, 2017, what did we collect on these three taxes? When would we be able to look at that number without it being clouded?
Yeah, end of June.
Well, end of June for sure, but if you want to really look at what I would say would be July 1 of 2017 through June, or July, you're getting me mixed up now. July 1 of 2016 through, July 1 to June 30 of 17, anything collected in June's not going to come in us until July, so that's going to show on next year's fiscal budget. And of course, you know, some months is when that can get distracted, and we all tend to eat out more because we just don't want to cook, or wives don't want to cook, or whatever. You guys don't, however.
Well, I didn't mean to take up your time, but I...
Appreciate your question.
That's some of the money that we really have to do the county business with.
Yeah, lodging tax, we don't really, we don't have any issues with anyone paying. Those seem to come in pretty steady, and they always come in, meals is what we have to chase down, as far as between lodging and meals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Lori? Thanks, Lori. Fay?
I don't know anything unless somebody asks a question.
Anybody got any questions for Fay? Here none, we'll move along. I see the sheriff here this morning, would you like to give us an update on the trash and whatever?
Yes, I would.
Good morning.
Before we talk about the trash, I'd like to say, I've seen my recommended budget for next year, there's a couple of items that I would be hopeful that you guys could revisit for me. One item will take our gasoline, it's $70,000. We ran out of that $70,000 this year in back in April. Same thing with police supplies. Police supplies is $35,000. We buy our ammunition out of that, we have to qualify a couple times a year, we qualify on three different weapons, so that $35,000, but go far after taking ammunition out of them. So I hope we get at least an increase to around $5,000 on that, and hopefully around $90,000 on the gasoline, and I'll do the best with that that I can. Trash pickup, working out really good. May 1st, we started, since May 1st, we've covered almost 100 miles, picked up 559 bags of trash that weighed 16,770 pounds. Still got a few days to get it through. Still got a few days to get it through the mall.
Does he may have any questions on that?
I have a question. Did the gas money come out, or did the trash come out of the sheriff?
No, you guys paid the trash. It's working out good, except we got some local.
Anybody have any, I know they're getting the major roads first, they may have any roads that they would like to put on the list?
Trying to get mostly the, all the trash that comes off the interstate right now, we're picking up a lot of that at the east, and we're trying to get places that have the trash collection places, those are always the problem spots, so we don't have someplace to go request, and we always get back to one of those.
Seem like the worst, must be the worst one is out at 52 Ford Stony Ford, to that convenience center. I need calls on that, from the town limits to the convenience center, probably every month.
Yeah, we can pick those things, we probably should pick those things, at least once a month, maybe twice, because there's not one place in the county where you have one of those, that there's not a lot of proof.
Keith, can you give us any kind of report on success, or whatever happened with the education in the schools? Are you going to put that in with DARE?
We have.
Is it, do you think it'll work? It's not going to work quick, but can we keep that going and try to teach the youngsters to be enforcement agents?
We can, but we need to get, it's harder to get tough on making litter arrests, when a lot of the litter that we take, you know, that we find and we take before, the judges are not convicted on evidence that belongs to that person, unless you see him throw it or suspicious. We got, we got some grant from the Forest Service a couple years ago, get these cameras, they're called flash and eyes, they give red dots, and anytime we know of a dump and site, we put one on there, but we make very few arrests.
I know they had a bill in the General Assembly last year that would take care of that problem, if you found a bag of trash and you could go through it, evidence that, who owned that in the bag of trash, that you could charge them and convict them, that they get to the General Assembly.
They'll say, we were aware of that, but they didn't make it through the General Assembly. But we need, we need something like that, because the judges are just not convicted on them.
Well, these are normally handled in the general district court, aren't they?
Correct.
Would it help any if we asked the judges to have a meeting about that and clarify a couple of little stipper penalties that would really help us out? That's an individual judge question, the statute's there.
Well, and the judge has told us why he does what he does, and as far as, you know, like Tim said, they didn't pass that law, that law would have made it a lot easier, and he would have been bound by that. But I understand why he's making the decisions he's making, because there's very little evidence that they did it other than you found, that had their name in it. So I see why he's not doing what he does, but a lot of times, we know they're doing. We're trying to keep up with the dumping sites, that's where I feel like we can end up making the most arrests for now, and in the long term, that'll cut it out a lot, usually a break in that, because again.
It's just an opinion, I've never been a law enforcement, thankfully, I've been able to make a living otherwise, but my opinion, while we have courthouses, is the grandeur of dragging somebody up there and letting them face the judge. So whether we get convictions or not, would we try, say, a three-month period, of issuing tickets, bring them up there and let them face the judge? You've got a guy out that's got to be there to be present right when it's called, but they're normally there for other things. Would that help?
Prosecution's not our side, that's come on attorney's side, and those guys are really, really busy. We put a big burden on our common law attorney's office, and when they get a case that they know they can't win, they're not going to try. So, and I don't mind, because we keep it busy with those stuff.
Okay. I understand what you said.
And again, I mean, you know, you can't charge them with something that there's no statute to charge them with, I mean.
There are statutes, though.
I mean, as far as finding a bag of trash on the side of the road, it's got somebody's name in it, there's no statute to charge that person with that.
Right, we'd be better off sticking the cameras up on suspected dump sites, and putting more emphasis on that than trying to go by and catch somebody, or something like that. You know, unless you see that, that's what judges are trying. Every once in a while, we see that, you know, the unmarked car, they'll stop somebody, but as far as going out and working it, I think we're better off with the cameras, and you know, or the guy that sit alongside the road somewhere, because somebody throws them like five pounds, if you can.
I think you'll agree, we've got enough laws, but if we can't enforce those laws, having something on the books and a statute, unless you have enforcement, it don't really mean anything, does it?
It does not, and I think that's what the General Assembly was trying to do with that law, but they didn't make true.
Any other questions for sheriff?
Thank you.
Thank you, sheriff.
Mr. James?
Yes.
If I could, would you all mind jumping ahead into new business? We have Mr. Josh Lewis from the Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance with us, and if you don't mind for him to make a presentation, so he can get back out and beat the bushes to find more industries.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that. Mr. Lewis, you want to come on up?
While he's, while he's coming up and getting that ready, as you all know, the Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance was previously the Virginia A Corridor, and I ask Josh to come and just give you all an overview of some of the actions he's been doing, some of the things he's been making good progress on, and share with you all, and let you all see some of the work that's been done. Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Josh.
I'd like to thank the board and Stephen for having me come and speak with you today, to get a little bit of my day, what's been going on for the past year. Maybe the last time I was here, we were still at A Corridor, I'm going under transition, strategic claims and things I'll get to in just a few minutes. What I just handed out to you is some new marketing material that we recently completed, there's other pieces that can go into this, but kind of highlights our greenfield sites. There's a food and beverage insert, I just came from a couple of food and beverage shows, I utilized that insert to compare what we are to the southeast of the United States, the NPI, where we have competitive advantages in cost and labor and energy and those things. So I just wanted to provide that, so you could see and feel kind of the material that we're putting out, coincides very well with our new website. So I'll give you an update on all these things as we go. For those that may not be familiar, we're an organization that was created in 1989, after a study by the General Assembly that kind of was clear point enough to see that regionalism was a thing of the future for economic development. I report to eight regional partners, which are eight localities that are currently a member of the organization, include Bristol, Washington, Smith, Will, Plain, Grayson, Carroll, and Galax. This organization is funded by the localities, that a dollar per capita assessment, that is a self-assessment that was agreed upon in 1990 and has remained unchanged since then. Again, I was hired by eight county managers after my predecessors retired. Before that, the executive committee was made up of high-profile business leaders. The eight county managers, eight county administrators came together and decided that they needed a little bit more oversight of the organization, changed the bylaws, and then currently, my executive committee is eight county managers, so I report to you on about a bi-monthly basis. So, so the organizational objectives are to lead industry attraction efforts for the region, to coordinate and assist industry prospect visits, to engage the private sector for funding and support, and to serve as economic development representative for the region. I work closely with the joint IDA in Wood County, David Manley and his group, and I have lead that made it the specifications of progress of other sites or buildings in the county, I pass those leads on to David, and then we work the project together from there. When I came on board about a year and a half ago, going on, well, going on two years, we was in a very unique position of trying to close down an office, we had some outdated material, we didn't have a functional website, I had no marketing material, I actually didn't have a computer when I walked into the office. So early on, we had to identify issues with the organization. First step was develop a strategic plan, a strategic marketing plan. Currently, we're in the implementation phase of that, and a monitor phase, and then we'll adjust at the end of the year, based on some recent activities. Stephen and definitely Salal may have shared with you the strategic marketing plan that was approved last June, and put into effect in July and August, when we started working on the rebranding of the organization, some of the marketing materials and the website. I don't want to bore you with reading through a lot of different pages, and I can provide you a new copy if you'd like, but it really just outlines where we want to be in two to three years. Currently, we're about halfway through this process, the other part of it will be the lead generation part. All of the files and everything that I can see from the past in the organization, most of the leads were coming from the state. When their state leads dried up, so did the activity in the region and the localities, and thus the animosity toward the state and some of the regional economic development group, because there was not a lot of activity and a lot of site business and a lot of projects landing in the region. So again, at the end of the meeting, if you'd like to see the strategic plan, I can provide that to you. Previously, the A Corridor, that had been in place since 2004, first thing when I came on board, I recognized there was a problem with, with the name and the organization. Basically, nobody understood what the A Corridor stood for, where's the B Corridor, where's the C Corridor, where's the D Corridor, it didn't have a lot of traction. So for strategic purposes, we developed a new brand, a new logo, basically under the premise that if we have Virginia's Industrial Advancement Alliance, and people started searching for industrial sites in Virginia, then search engine optimization would put our sites and our website higher up on the Google search engine. This is our current website, I'm not sure if anyone's had an opportunity to browse through it, I'm really excited about it, did a lot of work on this thing, so if you don't like it, you know, be kind and give me some constructive criticism, but it highlights, you know, things that go on in the region, but it highlights very specifically on the front page, our great sites, that we have a flicker that you can scroll through. So if you're searching for greenfield sites in the state of Virginia, and you come upon our page, you'll see instantly great greenfield sites, first thing. We also developed some measurables, you know, no organization, especially nonprofits, can, can project or communicate how effective we are unless we have things that we can measure, which are website visits, leads generated, RFI submitted, website activity, site visits, and projects landed. Previously, before I came on board, I confided no history of how well we were doing on a year-to-year basis on these types of metrics. So now that we've implemented those, I'm utilizing this system, and it allows for me to come to you guys and to my executive committee and provide better reports on year-to-year improvements or year-to-year declines. Regional role, this is a quick visual, you know, pictures are worth a thousand words. Some people get confused, okay, well, what is Josh's role compared to David Manley's role, and how do they coincide and they work together? For me, I'm mainly, the mission of my organization is mainly based on the traction side, lead generation. Once the project comes to me and I funnel it to the locality, I will help them work the project, I'll organize the site visits, especially in our region, when we have a company that likes to come see a site, oftentimes, they're looking at multiple sites across the region. So I help coordinate those efforts. If you look at the graph, it kind of shows that, you know, business recruitment at the state regional level is a greater portion of the responsibility. At the local level, it's a very small portion, a lot of the local efforts are spent on business retention and expansion, downtowns, business startups, and they also work the RFI's once they come through. So it really is, and economies of scale, you know, everybody groups their resources together, but it's in one person to market the region, and then of all those leads, we bring those back and share those with the localities. Instead of each individual locality spending money sending eight different people to the same shows and to the same events, and really wasting resources. The site selection process, this is another visual to help, kind of help you kind of understand how this works. A lot of times, people will say, well, why don't you go, you know, cold call and knock on doors, and things of that nature. The reality of the situation is that most companies are looking to expand, especially foreign companies, hire outside agencies, they hire real estate professionals, they hire site consultants, and they control about 80 to 90% of the projects that happen in the United States every day. So what we do, a large portion of what we do is we target those sites, electric and real estate people, to get them familiar with the region, familiar with the quality of life, familiar with the greenfield sites, in hopes that when they have projects come through, that, you know, that they, okay, well, let me call Josh, let's see what he has, if he can meet these specs, let me call this region, they have great infrastructure, they have great interstates, have affordable land and affordable labor, let me call them. So that's really a part of the strategy. The other part of the strategy is to reach out to events and get in touch with companies one-on-one through lead generation efforts, through third-party contacts, but ultimately, it funnels down from companies looking in a geographical area that they want to be in the southeast, okay? Well, if you're a company and you want to be located in the southeast United States, your first point of contact is either normally a site consultant, a real estate professional, or the state of Virginia, because you don't have time to contact 130 localities, and you don't have the capacity to reach out on that breadth of scale. So this is how this kind of sausage is made at the local level, but everything that funnels down is a system, is very systematically, and is why we regard it as best practice. So again, role of my organization is to market the region's site selectors and target industries, be a conduit of support for project RFI's, help identify key drivers and craft our pitch of the region, host and entertain companies and prospects, provide regional presentations, regional messaging, do legislative advocacy for economic development programs and funds. I'm also the regional representative for the Workforce Investment Board, and have recently been appointed to the Go Virginia Regional Council. There is a possibility that we could have some representation on the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Board of Directors, or some type of subcommittee, which again, will strengthen our voice of the region on how to utilize state resources to help us bring companies to the region. So for the past year, we've implemented the strategic plan, completed the website, we brought in $30,000 in private sector support, been on about, well, now it's 12 marketing trips since I created this slide. Had nine site visits, and we're up to about 20 active projects. But that was pretty much the end of the presentation. I don't want to spend too much time, I'd really like to leave some time for some questions, and that way I can answer things that you have concerns about or questions about.
Anybody have any questions for Josh?
I've got one, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Looking at your website, Progress Park is larger than all the other shovel-ready sites combined.
Correct.
Why wouldn't you list that first instead of fourth?
Because you have eight partners, and I have a seven-member mutiny.
Okay. Aren't we a member?
So what I do is.
I mean, you don't have it in size site, alphabetical order.
Yeah, I go through it randomized.
Okay. I mean, if I'm an industry looking for a large park, wouldn't you go to the top of the page first?
Well, not most of the, if you break it down.
Why wouldn't you list that first instead of fourth?
Because you have eight partners and I have a seven, seven-member mutiny.
Okay. Aren't we a member?
So, what I do is...
I mean, you don't have it in size site alphabetical order.
Yeah, I go through and randomize.
Okay. I mean, if I'm an industry looking for a large park, wouldn't you go to the top of the page first?
Well, not most of the, if you break it down, most of the sites that are searched are normally in the thirty to forty acre range. The crown jewel, which is Lot 24 of the region, that is the largest park, I mean, largest site, the amount of activity at that site, or the amount of companies looking for that large, the footprint is very small.
Maybe I'm imagining this or, or it was something else, but was this what Smith County was talking about dropping out?
Couple of years ago, Smith County did, dropped out of two or three years ago, they are back in the fold right now, and our active members, Mr. Carter attends all of our executive committee meetings, they see the value in this regional marketing effort and, and, and I think the key value being what Josh was talking about, the connections with the site consultants and developers out there that are key to have someone out there attending these meetings.
And Bristol's staying too, presumably?
Right now, I don't know if we've gotten final word, Bristol has been staying in, Washington County has been the one that has been going back and forth that we've been hearing, hearing comments from them.
There's, again, this is a, you know, this is kind of my go-to pitch about what's happened in the region, or then what's caused these cracks, and the, and the partnership is, there's been a lack of projects and a lack of activity. Not to place any blame, but there've been, haven't been very clairvoyant forward thinking with, as it comes to marketing the region. When you don't have a functional website, which is your first point of contact for most industries that are interested, I can't hand these out, I can't hand these, you know, these handouts to individual people, most of the time, they're going to search you on your website. When you don't have a functional website, there's an issue. And we didn't, when I stepped in the door, there wasn't a functional website. So, not to, to lambast anybody, but, you know, there were some organizational foundational problems that needed to be addressed. In the meantime, there was a, a lack of projects. So, you add that with my macro-level issues of rural plight, which is, in rural America, the trend is localities are suffering across the United States. You have three thousand and something counties, localities, I would say two thousand of those are rural counties, and most of those are fighting for the same projects that we're fighting for right now. Okay, so you have a limited number of projects, and you have rural counties that are declining population-wise, industry-wise, employment-wise, we're not unique, okay? So, this is a, you know, pervasive across the country and across the globe, really. So, we're competing with everyone, and so we have to do a better job, we have to really focus on our strengths and find out what our competitive advantages are, competitive advantages, and, and really be specific on who we're targeting and when.
Are the site consultants and the, and the real estate developers that, that work with these companies, are, are they known? Do we, do we know who they are? I mean, or, or do they just show up and say, you know, that, you know, we're looking at, you know, a site for, for whatever code name it is?
Yeah, the, well, it happens a couple of different ways. One is, I don't want to, don't nail me down on these numbers, but there's about two hundred and three hundred prominent site consultants that control the majority of the projects that happen in the United States every year, either them or their agency. Jones Langless South comes to mind, that's somebody who recently developed relationships with global development strategy, I mean, there's, there's tons of firms that deal with these. So, normally what happens is they have, they have a company that comes in that has certain parameters, and they reach out to the states, or their regional groups that they have relationships with and share this project RFI. Once they share with me, I look at the region and decide, okay, this, this'll work, this'll work, this'll work. We, I reach out to Stephen or David or whoever and say, here's an RFI, fill this out, and we'll submit it by this point in time. I either submit it directly to the site consultant or submit it back to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, who was reached out to by the company or the site consultants. So, we know who they are, I know them all individually, no, I guess is the question.
Let me, let me give you an example, let's say that, you know, for Progress Park here in Wood County, we were interested in a distribution center, for whatever. Are there, do we have knowledge, you know, through your organization or through our organization, as to who those site consultants are that deal with, with, with distribution centers? And I mean, I know that you say, you know, can't go out, you know, knocking on doors, but, I mean, is there not a possibility that we can let people know we're specifically interested in, you know, in a, in a particular type of business or industry?
Yes, we work to identify the, the agencies that deal with target sectors. And so for our, for me, like, the food and beverage is a, is a big target, target sector. So, I'll find out which site consultants work predominantly in that, in that sector. So, very specifically to your question, the distribution, I mentioned Jones Langless South, so there's a site consultant named Matthew Powers, who used to work for Walmart, who was involved with the project that almost landed at Walmart, he is now a site consultant for Jones Langless South, and he worked very heavily in logistics, distribution, those types of, those types of projects. So, we've reached out to him and kept us in constant contact, and if he has projects that might be looking in the southeast that, that need our very particular parameters, then, then we'll submit our advice to those projects. So, there are, to answer the question, there are very specific people that work on certain target sectors that we can reach out to, distribution being wood, food and beverage, consumable goods, paper products, things of that nature.
Anybody else have any questions? Joe? Coy? Gene? Charlie?
I will make a couple of comments. Josh did, he mentioned briefly, but I think it is very important for us that he is on our regional Go Virginia board and works, works hard, and in fact, throwing out several parameters and sort of the setup and everything from the very beginning, trying to, to work with them on that. Secondly, he is working, in my opinion, hard with the, the change in administration at the Economic Development Partnership. He has scheduled visits, Mr. Morey has actually been here, we met with him, there's a visit coming up in July, I believe it's scheduled for him and the staff to come down and, and review our area, and those are the connections that we need to be continuing to make and working on.
Yeah, the, the relationship with VDP has to be strong, you know, some, some regions that have, you know, the Roanoke Regional Group, there's, to give you a quick overview, there's about fifteen of me in the state, there's about thirteen, fifteen regional groups, depending on what you consider a regional. You know, some regional groups, Roanoke, Richmond, Hampton Road, they operate with budgets of, you know, two million dollars. So, you can imagine the amount of money they're pumping into their lead generation efforts through third parties, where they're getting, they're getting agencies to line up meetings and do cold calling and find companies that need very specifically what we're looking for. So, working with VDP, we have to rely a lot on them because they have the resources that we do not have. As an example, I mentioned earlier that we've been operating under dollar assessments in nineteen ninety, okay? So, with inflation, you know, we're operating at much less than the budget we had in the mid-nineteen nineties, and we're expecting results, sometimes you get what you pay for. So, in terms of what we're trying to do, instead of, you know, complaining about it, you know, working to increase private sector contributions, there's efforts underway to try to get some support from the Tobacco Commission to leverage the public sector funds and say, hey, R8 localities are putting in money to help bring companies here, where, where can you assist? This is our match, where are you? And trying to figure out what that might look like. So, there's applications underway for that. I'm working very closely with Stephen Morey, the new CEO of VDP, who have kind of a handshake agreement, they're going to try to push through a per capita rep, resource sharing with the regional group. So, if you're a part of a regional group, the state is going to give the regional group money to help you decide how you would like to market yourselves. So, that's another revenue stream. And again, you know, right now, I'm operating as a one-man band, so there's not any very particular part of this I'm going to be very effective in, unless we get some help and get some resources and expand staff. So, right now, we're working on foundational pieces, trying to work in leads as we go, increase our capital, our cash flow, and then get some staff assistance that better serve R8 localities and our regional partners. Yes, sir.
As a professional, what does it look like recently that Bogota County is a shining star? They're no better than we are, and...
I believe that.
They have, I believe, no easier sites to develop, they have limited railroad exposure, they got CNO running along the river, but otherwise, it's virtually nonexistent. They're close to Roanoke, I'm not sure that's a big help other than a labor market that appears to be there, but suddenly, everything's coming to Bogota, it appears that way. Is there a political connection to the state that's bringing things to Bogota? Is there a political reason we're not getting things to locate here?
If I had to be, do you want me to be candid?
Well, if you believe in the site commission, commission helping, you will go forward and you'll believe in anything, so go ahead.
The, if you want me to be candid about why, why Bogota's been, been winning projects is based on a couple of things. It's kind of adding odds, and you, you've nailed a couple of them. One is, the, the labor market's a little larger. If we've lost, the main feedback I've, I've received from the projects that we've missed out on the past year and a half is, you know, we don't have the labor force of that particular project anymore. So, you know, there's things being addressed in the pipeline, the COE, about the COE, Center of Excellence, they're trying to get off the ground, the community colleges are revamping, and I work closely with them to give them the feedback they need to make their decision on what type of program they'll land. But to me, Bogota's winning because, one, they're a part of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. The two projects they landed were leads generated by their regional group, with the resources that they put together, and they market, and they, and they pay for third-party lead generation. That's where two of those leads came from. And so, if you have five hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars to throw at lead generation a year, eventually, it's going to pay off. The reason Bogota wins is their, the land's cheaper than Roanoke, but they're close enough to Roanoke to be able to claim all those assets, and they're right on the interstate, okay? So, I would say those are probably three or four factors that goes into why they've landed some recent projects. I don't think they're any better than we are, I think we had some of the best sites in the state, and they're running out of land. Roanoke right now has just developed a, put together a, an authority to, to develop a site right off eighty-one, as you get to exit one, one forty-three when you take two twenty, there's a piece of land there they're trying to develop, because they're out of product, they're out of land.
And they're really limited in future water supply.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the water supply.
Well, think back. Are you from this area?
No, sir.
Just a few years ago, they had water restrictions all over because Carbon Co. couldn't take care of, of their residential development. Well, if you can't take care of residential development, how can you support big industry? We've got a vast water supply here.
I can't speak directly on their utility abundance of water, potable water for industry, they might have something I'm not familiar with.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? What Josh, thank you, thanks for all the work that you do do.
Appreciate it. And you can always reach out individually anytime, and I'll answer the questions the best I can.
What way, is Washington County, are they going to participate or...
If I had a coin, I would...
So, you don't have a budget?
No, that's, uh, it's been quite frustrating trying to keep the group together and try to, try to, you know, communicate the value proposition of what, it's not what we were yesterday and last year, or today, we're talking two or three years, and, and the ROI, they want to see, you know, instant results, and everybody does, but I've been trying to be, be clairvoyant enough to say, hey, this is what's going to happen, and so far, I think we've accomplished a lot of those goals, you know, Go Virginia Regional Council, hopefully Tobacco Commission, the private sector, we have some, some interest, so.
While I'm at Go Virginia, your take, how, how is that developing?
Well, Go Virginia, it's in the early phase, it's, right now, there has to be, for every region, they have to develop an economic diversification plan, which is pretty much a data, a data analysis of the region, okay? And the VDP's undertaken a very similar one at the same time. I was trying to connect the dots to save our region some money, but I don't think the timeline's going to work out. To do a deep dive and say, this is who you are, this is the macro-level things that are going on in the global economy, here are some opportunities, do they match with your, your, your resources at the local level, here's some state issues that you might have, this might, because a lot of times, we don't lose projects in-state, we lose projects out-of-state, they're going to other states due to taxes or some incentive packages they can put together. Energy cost is a big one, especially for large manufacturers, if somebody has a four cent per kilowatt hour and we have five or six, and if you're talking large loads, that's a significant, that's millions of dollars a month. So, they're trying to put together a study to say, hey, this is what you're, you should be targeting because this is what you can do well with, and it's a, it's a growing industry, and, so that study has to be completed for the Go Virginia Regional Council to decide, okay, what types of projects should we fund with that, with that pool of money? And it coincides well with the VDP because the VDP's going to undertake this study and provide the regional groups a breakdown of their regions to help them identify where we should be spending lead generation funds and, and what shows, and which countries, and which types of sectors we should be going after. So, hopefully, by the end of the year, both of those studies will be completed, and I guess by next spring, I guess Go Virginia Fund would be, probably being allocated to projects.
Thank you, Josh. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, moving back into our agenda, agenda of reports, the Water Committee report. Recommendations.
I was there, so I don't have to move. That's right, okay. The Water Committee met on May sixteenth, twenty seventeen, recommends approval of an amendment to the Engineering Services Agreement with feeding ports for the Speedwell Phase Three Water Project.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here none? I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Ah.
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 The Chair votes, uh, is that all from the Water Committee?
Yes.
Okay, next, Budget Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee met May nineteenth, made the following three recommendations. The first is to amend and appropriate five hundred dollars to account seven one one oh four six one one oh five, and twenty-five hundred to seven one one oh four six one two hundred, and this is money that we received from the Town of Royal Retreat, and it's allocating it for the campgrounds.
Okay, come from, yeah, from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Chair, I'll do a roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, next item.
Second is to accept the VAICOR renewal proposal for fiscal year twenty, or twenty eighteen.
If you ain't come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Comments? Here none? Do a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Ah.
Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, next item.
And lastly, to accept the VAICOR, DFIS workers comp for fire and rescue volunteers and the accident and sickness insurance at the volunteer basic benefit option based on quote number eight seven one nine one.
Okay, anybody come from committee, it doesn't need a second. See anybody have any questions? Comments? Here none? I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Ah.
Aye.
The Chair votes, uh, is that all from the Budget Committee? Okay, move right along, County Administrators report.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I have one item on the report to be discussed, and this was an item that we got right after the Water Committee met, but it is a decrease for Barron Springs Division Three change order. This is a change order adjust, adjust for finer quantities, and it is a decrease in the amount of eighteen hundred and sixty-three dollars. Mr. Vaughn is trying to close out as many of these projects before the end of the year, and if you all don't mind going ahead and taking action upon this, if you do not want to, we can refer to the Water Committee. Since it was a decrease, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'll need a motion from the floor, since it didn't come from committee, approve change order number three.
I'll make that motion.
That was second.
Thank you.
Have a motion as second. Any discussion, questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes, uh...
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to just give a verbal report on a, a couple of items, just to let you all know the status of, of where we stand. We did receive seventy-five percent review plans from the Land Group on the Expo Center. We've had a couple of meetings, reviewing, sent comments back to them on those plans to get, to get that work moving ahead, and are continuing to, to answer some of their follow-up requests on it, but the goal of their plans been to us as anticipated by June twentieth. On the Grouse Ridge...
On the Grousbridge Road project that several citizens spoke about last week, I did meet with four or five owners of that road, I did talk with VDOT, we sent the plaques and the maps to VDOT for review, um, met with landowners, went over how the tax districts could be set up and scheduled if, if VDOT can work out entrance way, make sure that the right way and everything is okay for construction. Uh, that is continued ongoing, should be meeting with Jeff and have a, a visit out there this week, if not next week, of, of going through and looking at it. Uh, their recommendation, uh, was to look at going from, uh, the Pepper's Ferry Road to, uh, where Quail Forest Road breaks off, about one point two, one point three miles to the first area of the state. So, uh, just want to let you know, we are following up and continuing to work on it, and hopefully we'll have more information for you in the upcoming months.
So, Jeff thinks I have a decision on more, you know, of, of the roadway concern?
Yeah, that's, that's all we'll go out there and take a look at it and see what our options are. Of course, as I told the residents, uh, the big thing that's, you know, that's obvious right away is we also are going to need land for stormwater management facility down at that bottom area more than likely, uh, where, where the creek is. And that would need to be some land provided by one of the adjoining landowners there in the process. Uh, so there's, there's a couple of things to look at on it and roadway that we can, once we have more information from VDOT, we'll know what our next steps will be.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, the, the final, uh, item, just to let you know, Tyler Unit System, we, we discussed, uh, do have the audit, uh, representatives from the auditing firm that have worked, uh, quite a bit in some other localities with Tyler Units, uh, are going, are working on the schedule and coming in and work with us on some best management practices, some policies and procedures to, to help use, uh, in, in that respect, and continuing to work with David and, and Bruce, uh, Fay and Lori as well, and, uh, looking at, uh, scheduling, training with specific goals as, as they work with it, and we still are running into the glitches and the problems and, and conversion issues, and, and David's working closely with them, uh, but we, uh, you know, we still have a long ways to go on it, but those are a couple of steps that we do have set up, and Corbin's got a couple of dates that he sent to us, and he, and I don't know if it'd be him or someone from his firm who'd be coming in and, and working with us as well, just wanted to give you a, a follow-up on it. And, uh, that's all that I have this time.
Sure, ma'am. Go back to the Land Group. When will, uh, will, uh, you know, the plans and things be presented to the board? Because in all honesty, other than saying that we're going to be able to build it in there, I, I have no idea what's, uh, you know, I don't, I mean, as a board member, I don't know, maybe everybody else has, I haven't seen it. Uh, and second question is, the committee's dealing with, with Land, but so far, nothing's been done that requires a, a vote by the full board?
Currently, what has been done so far is just been looking at the design layout of, of what was in the building and looking at changing parameters or doing cost-cutting measures to save cost of what's out there. Uh, we're, we're welcome if you'd like to go back, the full set of plans is, is on the back table back there that, that shows the, the plans that are being designed, but what has been done so far with the, the committee's review has pretty much just been looking at, uh, the layout of the building and trying to come up with cost-saving measures to help control the cost of, of what's been out there. And all I need the committee members addressing those items.
Gary, I think you've been privy by email to, uh, items that were identified by the committee, is that right? Steven, did that?
I don't know if they, I never, the committee got the email, I don't know if they got the email, but that would be worthwhile to send it off.
I've, I've got these.
I think that he's right, and that troubles me when he's right, but, uh, that, that they're privy, the whole board ought to be privy to what's going on and not be kept in the dark, because I personally believe that we've saved a lot of money.
And, and I'm not saying that it's not costing, I, I'm just saying that I don't, I don't know what's going.
Well, two things needs to happen. We need to save money and get the building we need and want instead of what the architect thinks we need.
But as far as any board action, as far as I know, there's not, not been any decision that, that's any board action.
Well, and the reason I was asking that, again, just simply because I, I, I do feel like I've had a lack of information, you know, not.
I really thought you were getting emails, and that's my fault for not understanding them.
I don't get them.
I, I will send out to you all the comments that we sent back, uh, last week and this week to, to Lane Enterprises, um, or Lane Enterprises, Lane Group, uh, on, on all the comments, but I, I'll give you examples, some of the items are in there, the, the entire length of the inside of the building was looking at some, uh, CMU walls, concrete walls and things like that, there was an expensive amount of lane of all of that block throughout the building, uh, looked at making changes on it, going back to metal stud walls and gypsum board or hardy board and things like that to, uh, put in some cost savings. Uh, the exterior of the building originally had eight foot of, uh, block going around it, lowered that to four foot of block at the base, just things that architecturally may have been more pleasing, but cost savings made more sense to, to remove some of those items.
Okay, move right along, Scott, County Attorney's report.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Orders for District One, Blackley.
Uh, other things, I would, uh, I'd like to say thank you for, for getting the, the second box back up to the, uh, uh, you know, center up at, at Apple Orchard, uh, for a while, I don't know why, but, uh, it's, it's back now, it's very beneficial, thank you.
Okay, West Whipple?
Nothing at this time.
East Whipple?
Nothing at this time.
Fort Chisora District?
Nothing today.
Lead Mines District?
Nothing.
Spiegel District?
Only thing I have is a road sign that's down, it's the corner of Jonas Town and St. Peter's Road. Somebody evidently ran over it and, uh, some kind of VDOT sign was there, I can't remember what the VDOT sign is, but V, I came and put theirs back, it is very funny. He thought since those things sat beside it, he'd have to prop it back up or done something.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't have nothing that's large. Uh, moving into new business, uh, we have the consent calendar for May twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, uh, entertain a motion to approve consent calendar.
I'm going to get my.
Have a second. Second, have a motion as second, any questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye. Next item is, uh, GovDeals Auction, you have a paper at your, um, desk, uh, have two vehicles to accept the, I'm thinking it's right to accept the bids on nineteen eighty-eight Ford F-350, uh, four thousand eight hundred and one dollars of Thomas Miller of Georgia. And we have a nineteen ninety-seven Ford E-350 at one thousand one hundred dollars. Steven? I didn't pronounce his last name. Of Virginia. A Ford total of nine, five thousand nine hundred and one dollars. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the bids.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I would make a request that you also declare those vehicles surplus and accept the bids.
Surplus and accept the bids.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussion?
Yeah, uh, Steven, how, what procedure, we got all that equipment out there in the lot, why does it build up like that?
A lot of the, the vehicles out there are sheriff's department vehicles that are either involved in court cases or things like that, um, that until they're released to us or something happens, we can't sell. These, uh, we are trying to, to get rid of more of them quicker. Um, did we declare that one sheriff's office vehicle surplus also that needs to just be hauled off?
I gave you a memo about that, though, on the surplus, sure.
Okay, we do have one vehicle that just is, is not sellable, but we need to declare surplus, and I'll have that for you at the next meeting.
What about the high-profile vehicles that, that have very special colors, like fire trucks and the ambulances and stuff like that, why, why are they continuing to sell?
Well, one of these is the, uh, one of these is the fire truck that is, is there that to be sold. Um, that's one of them. Uh, talked with Jason yesterday, uh, Unit Fifty-three from Wood County is supposed to be coming to us and want to get the one pulled from behind Lead Mines over there, and so to get both of them over there, I want to sell those eventually, I don't want those sitting around any longer. Uh, Mark and I are working to get rid of those vehicles, I don't, I don't think they should sit there at all.
Do we know that, that those boxes are, are junk?
From what we understand from the rescue squad on those, yes. Um, at least on the Wood County Rescue Squad.
Is, is there any other valid opinion we can give? That those boxes obviously cost a lot more than a cabin chassis.
Right.
So, I, I'd like to make sure that we're not selling something we could use. If, if they're not any good, let them go, but, and everything you can put in them for that matter, but if they have value.
We can confirm that.
Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Call for a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Aye.
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 The Chair votes, aye. Next item is CDVG Lot Twenty Sewer.
Yes, if you all remember, if you're, uh, one of previous meetings, we had a few, uh, items of, that you all adopted, including the fair housing resolution and things, um, we need you all to, uh, approve your acceptance of this, um, for a Section Five Oh Four regulation. Basically, um, if there is a, um, a concern about handicap accessibility, uh, to any of our structure or whatever, they notify me within seven days, and I work within seven days with them to, to, uh, provide a response. So another requirement of our CDVG Lot Twenty paperwork.
Just agree with the seeker. Okay, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second. Second, have a motion as second, any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye.
Can I ask an informational question about that?
Yes.
Steven, that's bureaucracy one oh one, is that a state requirement?
It is a requirement for CDVG for use of their funds, yes.
But it's in the code, you can't build it without the ADA, that's statutory law. That, that just seems like it takes up y'all's time.
It, it goes to the fact that any place, like where we're holding these meetings, to, to vote on any of these CDVG activities, or where we may be having people come associated with these CDVG activities, also have to be ADA handicap accessible, or if they're not, we'll make the accommodations for such to do things. So, I understand your, your comment, um, there's a checklist, and we got to have all these items on the checklist.
Any other questions? Okay, next item on agenda is going to close meeting under Code Section Two Point Two, Thirty-seven, eleven, uh, Point Eight, Point Seven, Consultation of Legal Counsel. Entertain a motion to go on closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I would, there, there are two reasons there, and I would ask that it state this. One is Keystone, which is on your agenda, I would ask, uh, number two, that you also add, um, DEQ, uh, DEQ issues.
Okay. Uh, that's added to the motion, entertain a motion for.
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion as second, any questions, discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are now in closed session.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Will you read the certification to closed session?
Whereas the Wood County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section Two Point Two, Thirty-Seven Twelve, Code of Virginia, requires a certification of the Wood County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wood County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification or resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed and considered other Wood County Board of Supervisors.
Have a second on certifying resolution.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? Here none, Dr. Helfman.
Aye.
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 The Chair, aye. Okay. Steven, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would request a motion from the board to, uh, authorize the county administrator to sign the consent order from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, entertain that motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? Here none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The Chair votes, aye. Okay, anything else to come forward board at this time until tonight?
Man, one item from Mr. Jerry Mays, who came to see me yesterday, um, he was issued a reimbursement check for travel expenditures by a member of his department. We didn't realize that we had quite so good of ties with Joe, which actually was mailed to the Board of Supervisors, the County of Wood, care of VDOT Rightaway Division in Bristol. So, uh, it took it away to get back to us, so, uh, um, anyway, he is trying to do the same thing of getting his year closed down, they were reimbursed for travel expenses, and I would just request an amendment and appropriation to the two, uh, items, two departments organizational charts, organizational codes I have shown on the front in order for him to reimburse his staff for these charges.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make it move.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Helfman.
Aye.
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 I don't know how long this thing lasted, but it looked like they stayed in a pretty good hotel, didn't it?
Yes, it does.
That's pretty much goes like it, doesn't it?
I didn't know you could do them individually.
Mr. Chairman, I have no more items to come before you before our public hearing at seven o'clock tonight.
Okay, uh, I did go, I will, build a little report, I did go to the Board of Directors meeting at VAECO Saturday, uh, it was held in, uh, closed, I didn't even have to go get a hotel room, it's in Montgomery County. Mary Biggs, the chief supervisor in, uh, Montgomery County, she's the president of VAECO this year, so the spring meeting is always held in the county of the president. Um, our dues hasn't changed, actually, they went down just a little from what they were. Uh, they based it on population, uh, they say we've, uh, decreased. They say we've decreased the population a little bit, so our dues hasn't changed for them. That's basically all really.
Is the fact commissioning it?
Yes. We'll give you a summary of that mess.
Well, I mean, I didn't.
I, we went last Wednesday and when they got to dilling out all the funds on the previous tabled items, when they got to us, they didn't have the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, you know, we made our case and I told them we would accept any commission to give us. Well, everybody sat there on their hands and never said no. So on the way back up the road, the committee, they never done nothing with our, our grant request. So then he sent the statute recommendation to send it to a loan committee, send it to the loan committee through the fact commission. So going up the road, Senator Carrico texted me and, you know, he was going to do something in the full commission. Well, when he got to the full commission, and I don't blame the Southside people. Well, if you wanted to give them money, why didn't you give them money in the committee? So they voted it down thirteen to nine, giving us any money. And I, you know, Bill called me afterwards and apologized and they didn't communicate with the Southwest Regional Committee. You know, really was confused on what the new member that took Ralph Smith's place. You know, she had, she's the one that brought up, well, we don't have the money now. And they didn't have the six hundred thousand. And Richard Sutherland, you know, did make some comments until afterwards. And I had, he come to the district three meeting with his, with his wife Brenda to talk to me last, last Thursday night and apologize for what happened. They said we should have got money. And we're gonna have to look at, I told them, I told them we'd try one more time. After that, I wasn't going back and asking for anything from the acquisition center. But they are restraints within the money they're getting now for whatever reason. I don't know, they're not getting but two million, they said two million dollars next year.
Yeah, but I think you would also be fair to tell them what they funded right before they turned us down.
Well, I mean, I, if you want to tell them that, Joe, go ahead, because I can't remember exactly what they funded.
Okay.
If you're, if you want to do that, go ahead and do it now, then I'll finish.
Okay, well, it was buzzing along. It was not recommended by their staff to fund a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be matching funds for other state funds by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So if you look at it like I do, that out of that meeting, they got a quarter million dollars, quarter million dollars to renovate and build an ice cream parlor in Raven. And then that depleted the money they had for us. So that, that was a rub to me that what is more important to Southwest Virginia and to economic development, making our project go forward with our help, or putting virtually an ice cream parlor on a dead end road that's a community that you buy postage stamp and Horton's Hardware is all that's left at Raven. Raven, if you don't know, is going down the Quench River, about twelve, fourteen miles beyond Richland. It's not even on four sixty, it's off of four sixty. So that, that little function of the Southwest Virginia Committee made our situation look like it couldn't happen. But Tim boldly said, give us whatever you can, and nobody moved. Didn't, didn't even breathe, so.
And like I said, you know, after the full commission turned us down, well, they, they sent a, they made, somebody made a motion that they'd sent the staff recommendation, sent it to the loan committee. And I told Bill, I said, you know, we're not interested in the loan committee. But they, they even, I can't think of the girl, the female that roughly.
Oh, she's from, she's from Scott County.
She regrets it. Mr. Sutherland, you know, come to talk to me and they regret we didn't get any, they should have given us money in the committee. But like I said, they're, you know, they don't have that much money this upcoming fall, September. And I haven't talked to Stephen, or maybe I have talked to Stephen, I can't remember talking to Stephen. The lowering our grant request from seven hundred and fifty down to four hundred thousand for this upcoming grant that we put in. And that's all I'm gonna say right now.
Well, now, I just asked because I didn't know.
Yeah, well, I meant, I'm glad you did, because I, it's slayed my mind, I won't tell anybody what Prince Park. Anyway, it was, and the full commission turned around and, and give the money the next day for four-wheelers.
To develop a four-wheeler trailer in Wise County in Southwest Virginia.
But, you know, and, you know, the, the fact the commission was, the money was put out there through economic development in the back of regions in Virginia. And, and I'll just tell you, like I told Senator Carrico, the staff, you went from grants to matching dollar for dollar grants. Now you went to a loan program. In my opinion, all the staff, the staff is always recommending these loans while they're doing to keep themselves a job. Because when the money is gone, the money is gone. And that's what it set out to be in the beginning. To fund projects for economic development in the back of regions. And when the money was gone, it was gone. And I think they, the staff down there are trying to make it into a lifetime job. So. But like I said, I told Senator Carrico, I said, you know, I've tried this one more time and after that, I'm not, I'm not begging any of them for any money. See, that said.
Mr. Chairman, before we recess, I, I would just recommend that, that General not be able to video it, but then we do just take the full board back and do an overview of the plan so they can see the entire building and what's proposed back there.
Okay. Then that's where we'll retire to. Can I be introduced in some kind of order? If you would, keep your mic spot.
I'll just take this one back.
I've got a question, want to go back there, will turn the heat down?
Yes.
Otherwise, I ain't going back there.
You want to bring lay them there on the floor?
Yeah, you probably lay them in the floor after.
Which one? Sean Conner or Roger Moore? Throw some water in there, isn't it?
What are you doing, darling, Ray?
No, I don't either.
Take a quick over there.
Woman outside did it.
That's what I was thinking.
Been hanging beef in here for a while.
You trying to heat up?
Yes.
Our dish, right?
He got heated, he got heating his office leak door.
No, it's colder in there.
Cold as this?
Obviously.
Basically, that's the main layout. I think everybody's interested in seeing it. Basically, you have a hundred and fifty by three hundred foot performance area.
This is a hundred and fifty by?
Three hundred, yes.
Like double doors at, at this end and not at this end?
Both ends, at both ends. Double doors here, then your exit doors, and double doors here, and your exit doors.
Okay, is this big enough for, for big stuff to come out?
Yes.
Okay.
Then you've got seating capacity, twelve hundred and fifty on this side, twelve hundred and fifty on that side is what they have designed right now. But as you can see, there's openings here. This is designed with the Hussey Pro documents as it is, but the, uh, we're working with the bleacher builders group to possibly look at other options as well.
Like premier seating in the front and bench seating?
It's, yes.
Or state, yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're all bleacher seatings, but these are fold-down chairs, fold-down seats.
And these are benches?
Yes. Just like gymnasiums.
That's what's designed. But if this alternate can give us more of the premier seating within the money we've got, obviously, you know, that's where Gary, there is money already for them.
Where's, uh, where's the ordinance on this, which is, oh, okay, so this is north, I got you. There's not that much difference between plain north and magnetic north down there.
Really not, it's not right there.
Well, I know, but.
That shows there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I don't think it's.
Well, when I was in Army, there was quite a bit of difference on the maps that I was trying to come over.
Job and order is always on your real account.
Yeah. That gave them the ability to call this the east side and the west side instead of it being the northeast side and the northwest side. But. Got co-compliant bathrooms on both sections.
Right.
Then you have office areas on, on the both sides. And this has also got your ticket window areas right in here on both sides.
Where's mechanical?
Mechanical, um, you've got.
You've got mechanical seats back there in the M section.
You've got a utility closet here, a utility closet here, a utility closet over here, a utility closet over here, which is where they've got the different, and the mechanical closet back in here for somebody electrical behind each of these as well.
All right, what, I'm, I'm assuming all the enclosed offices and meeting rooms and that sort of thing will be air-conditioned? The, the stating will?
No, the, the, this will have, the, the performance arena will have the infrared gas heaters above it. They'll be above the seating areas here and the seating areas here and the hallways here. This will have electrical force pair heat in the bathrooms. And these will have the heating or air conditioning in the meeting rooms and office areas.
Restrooms not air?
Restrooms not air-conditioned, no, just ventilation.
And this up here is?
Don't make it too comfortable, they'll linger in there.
Commercial kitchen is?
Yeah, the design for the commercial kitchen could go in that area right there.
What's the largest meeting room?
This would be it, this one and this one. These two actually, this is the folding wall in between them.
All right. So you can make a almost fourteen hundred square foot meeting room?
So when you have the seats, it looks like you've got the seats thrown in there and not on the other side. Is that like a phase one thing, like you're buying bleachers for one side and not the other?
No, they're showing them because of the, the plans were to get the portable bleachers. So when you close them up, you could roll them out of the way. So you've got this entire open area to do things. So that's just showing it designed like that.
Being folded up right away.
You could have home shows and all that on that.
So you can take the bleachers out of the way and have more space on the couch.
Yeah.
You've got steps down from here to here.
Yeah, right there.
Four foot. Just these on each.
You have ramps over here for handicap accessibility. You've got ramps there and stairs here.
All right, so the arena is, is sunk in by?
Four foot.
Four feet?
Yeah.
So you got a railing around this?
Yeah.
Those are where the cupolas are over top.
Okay.
That, when you get to the elevation profile, you'll see those.
Got a little bit more wind load there, Gary, and you got the weight of those fans, you gotta account for that. Spot load.
Basically, this is your clear span from here, behind the bleachers, to here, behind the bleachers. And then this is the step down. When you get to elevation profile, you'll see this is the lower area over here.
Where's the elevation?
Down midway at architectural, I think.
Eight two oh one and two oh two.
All right, now this is what I'm, what I'm asking. This, on, on this end, it opens up.
Oh, that's the side.
That's the side.
The side, okay, where's the end?
Right there.
Goes northeast here and go to the next page.
Okay.
And there's the southwest.
There are.
Yeah.
All right, well, am I, am I seeing it wrong? Are just two, two garage doors looking like things?
Yeah, they're like sixteen feet wide and they line up exactly with the other end. So if you have tractor pulls or, or events that you need to go all the way through the arena.
Okay, well, well, I was, I was thinking that it was, you know, it was gonna be doors.
One big.
Yeah, that would open up, okay.
Like a hanger, it's not gonna be.
Okay.
It can't handle the wind for one thing, and it can't, sure can't handle the weather. But, you know, they gotta have on trucks, they gotta be on a wheel to carry that weight.
That's had to look like eighteen foot though.
It might be. And the apex area is fifty-one feet. No, but I, we can speculate that I, I haven't had too many of the things in my mind.
There shows your step down for your floor. Four foot below.
Three hundred.
So it's three hundred, about three hundred?
Looks like OJ's getaway car.
It didn't get far.
And that woman's wearing a coat, but it's not air-conditioned.
Well, I, I just wondered, it looks like somebody's grandmother.
Well, there's not anything, yeah, better looking than a commodeys.
Okay.
And yet not just the women's bathroom, bigger than the men's bathroom.
And, and the good news, plumbing chase in behind it, so you can get back into everything behind it.
Eighteen stalls.
Thirty-six, what do you think the other side?
Okay, thirty, yeah, thirty-six, so. If you've got twenty-seven women, somebody's still waiting in line. Okay, all right, well, I've got a better idea now.
Does that help?
Yeah, it does.
And if you, there's a half set of plans here. If you want to take them to review and bring them back, you can.
Well, I won't now, but I might. Yeah, just take them overnight, just give them overnight and, and, and look at them.
But a lot of what, I'm gonna go back to this A one oh one to show y'all. A lot of what's been discussed on the floor plan. The, uh, they had all of these walls as been the CMU walls, and that was one of the things that's talked about, especially down in this area, meeting rooms, concessions, all of that, especially on that side over there where it's bigger. By going to metal studs. By going to metal studs and sheet rock, if you decide down the road you want to make changes or whatever, if you need to widen things, whatever, it's a whole lot easier to take out. Plus, when you take three hu, you know, and I'll just make it simple, when you take three hundred foot of block from here all the way to here, three hundred foot of block from here all the way to here, same thing on the other side, just for your internal walls, not even including what you're building here. Real quickly, you're up fifteen hundred, two thousand square feet of building block walls all the way through there.
Well, I mean, they didn't need, they didn't need it for load bearing.
Nope, not needed at all for load bearing, it's just... Their aesthetics and longevity is what they said, is what they were pushing for. And, but that's an expensive item to put that much block, and even when you get into this area here, and it's what, twelve, fourteen feet high, and some of those areas of the, the block through there, plus it takes a long time to lay that.
You remember when people used to lay some, uh, some walls out of four-inch block?
Yeah. I've actually tore out classrooms that had the four-inch solid block between them, and I've seen students that could have run through them. They didn't do good on sound.
And they're, they're hard to lay.
Yeah.
Plum and level too.
Save a little bit on the block that you pay for and label.
Yeah.
And that's one thing about those heights here, when they had eight feet going around the perimeter of that building, remember, it's twelve hundred feet around that building, times eight feet high. It's not just the block and labor, it's you gotta have scaffolding to lay eight-foot blocks instead of four-foot blocks.
All right, now, does this reflect the change?
Yeah.
Yes, that's four foot.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought.
We cut out half of that block, and then that other recommendation cut out twenty-four hundred square feet of block.
Yeah.
Twenty-four thousand foot of block.
All the, all the plumbing through the floor?
Yes.
Everything can be, you gotta have a little bit above grade, and, and that's one of our review comments to them right now, is why you're using copper. There's gotta be a better choice than copper.
Way everybody uses the pick stuff now, don't they?
They don't.
Ah, gosh.
And below grade, you know, why not use regular waterline? You guys are on the water committee.
Yeah.
You can get a two-inch utility pipe for about twenty percent of the cost of a two-inch copper, and then you can't find many people left that know how to join two-inch copper. You've got a silver solder, you can't solder it. Or you go with a silver solder coil, you might get a full-time job out of it.
I can get by with it, no, I wasn't going to do no complete building like that. Well, I tell you now, I, when I, when I use copper and solder, I, I don't have any leaks at all until I turn the water on.
You like the dry test, but you don't like the wet?
But, uh, well, yeah, there's no reason to, I mean, not, you know, just in, uh, you know, in labor costs alone. I mean, you know, not just material, but I mean, that, why in the world?
I agree with you.
If you're gonna ask them what a two-inch compression fit costs.
Oh.
Per fitting.
Yeah.
You're like eighty-some dollars per fitting.
All right, well, anyway, that's all we've got, if you want to adjourn, Mr. Chairman, or if anybody else got any, or not adjourn, recess until seven tonight?
Uh, we're recess until seven PM tonight.
Okay, there you go.
With County Board of Supervisors back to order from recess from our previous meeting today. Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing on the county, proposed county budget, and, uh, which includes the school board budget. Uh, go over a little housekeeping, uh, before we get started. Uh, if you're speaking as individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking as a group, if I'm not mistaken, you have ten or six, six minutes. It's a public comment period, uh, and that's to hear y'all's comments on the budget. So with that being said, I'm gonna read the call for the public hearing. Presuant, pursuant to section fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh six of the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the citizens of With County an opportunity to comment on the proposed county budget, which includes the school board budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen slash twenty eighteen, and the tax levy for county year twenty seventeen. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May the twenty-third, twenty seventeen, in the boardroom of the county administration building, three forty South Sixth Street, Wiffel, Virginia, at seven PM. The budget synopsis is prepared and published for informational and fiscal planning purposes only. The inclusion in the budget for any item or items does not constitute or obligation on any part of the Board of Supervisors of With County to appropriate any funds for that item or purpose. There are no allegations or designations of any funds of the county for any purpose until there has been an appropriation for that purpose by the With County Board of Supervisors. The budget has been prepared on the basis of the estimate and request submitted by the Board of Supervisors, by the constitutional officers in the governmental agencies, non-governmental agencies, and department head of With County, and review and amendments to those requests by the Board of Supervisors and staff. At that, I will ask Mr. Baer to do a presentation on the county's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks to, uh, everyone that showed up, uh, tonight, uh, on the budget hearing. We look forward to your input. Couple items on the budget presentation, first on the expenditure summary. The total budget reflects an increase from the FY seventeen budget of seven million, two hundred, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, this is a nine point oh seven percent increase. As you go, go through a couple of these next items, you will see where most of those increases are coming from. Currently, on, uh, at the end of the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, our county debt totaled sixty-two million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. No new debt has been issued this fiscal year. In the upcoming budget, there is proposed new debt, which includes ten million in school renovation and one point two million for Red River Water Tank. Major proposed capital improvements within the budget include the school renovation project, which will be new debt, the water tank project, uh, which is new debt for, uh, a real development loan, uh, which will be paid by the New River Regional Water Authority, the Lot Twenty Sewer Project, which is a DHCD grant, the county office building project, which is a two thousand and ten bond and reserves that are setting aside for it, tower and communication improvements for our fire and rescue and sheriff's offices, which has been funded through our reserves, and circuit court clerk, uh, circuit court renovation, not clerk renovation, circuit court renovation, which is coming from reserves. Have a few slides that I'll just briefly go through, just basically as I talked about, the expenditure budget does show the increase previously mentioned in the total budget. General government administrations, the last column to your left is FY eighteen, the previous column, or left column to your right is fiscal year eighteen. Column to the left of it is FY seventeen, this goes back through FY twelve. General government administration costs in this budget have decreased by two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Judicial administration costs have a slight increase of fifty-four thousand dollars in this year's budget. Public safety has an increase of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in this budget. Uh, part of that is a sheriff's department, it has seen an increase in their police activity funds, they do have some additional items in their budget, but also have increases in correction and detention costs within that budget. Public works is remaining relatively flat in the budget by major changes in the public works. Health and welfare, the increase from seventeen to eighteen is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But fortunately, most of that is not a local share change, it's primarily due to changes in the Department of Social Services budget, primarily attributed to changes in funding from the state and federal level. Education, education is the one that you see the largest increase and change, and that is attributable to the, the school construction costs, uh, as put in the budget of ten million, seven hundred thousand, including the construction costs and the, uh, A and E fees, uh, anticipated for the construction. Operationally, we went from thirteen million in local funding last year to thirteen point one million proposed in this year's budget. Uh, obviously, education is the largest percent of the county's budget. This slide shows the local funds for schools and the state required levels. The blue is, uh, what With County provides, the red is the required amount. Roughly, uh, the required amount this year is approximately eight point six million, and operating funds With County is providing thirteen point one million, uh, or approximately a hundred and fifty-two percent of the state minimum. We have, have led our surrounding areas with our percentage of providing funds for operational towards the school system, uh, as we have always felt, school systems are critical and important for, for the county. The next side is just a breakdown showing the percentage of school funds provided by real estate and personal property taxes. Since two thousand and eleven up through fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, the amount of funds that we have been providing to the school system have exceeded the total amount collected by the real estate and personal property taxes in With County. That shows a dedication and support of education. Uh, it also shows that there's limited local funds to go towards other county issues, whether that's fire, rescue, the sheriff's department, communications, et cetera. Uh, the two thousand and eighteen proposed budget, with the tax increases, dropped this to just below the hundred percent level for the first time in six years. Parks, cult, recreation and cultural does show an increase this year. Uh, most of that is due to our cough associated with our exposition center down at Exit Seventy-Seven. Community development, uh, has a decrease from this year, a very small amount there. Next phase is a little bit on local revenue. Uh, county generated, uh, revenue, primary sources are shown next. Basically, there are five primary, uh, revenue sources. Anticipated increases in debt service, primary for school construction, estimated approximately, um, ten point seven, as discussed, uh, have led me to recommend a proposed tax increase in real estate and personal property. First tax that you've seen is our public service tax, public services assessments that are received for electrical, telephone, natural gas, cellular providers. We have seen an increase in the last few years, uh, from, uh, improvements by the Appalachian Electric Power Company and additional lines and transformers that they have put in that have led to increases. We are expecting about a flat level from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. Machinery and tools tax peaked in two thousand and ten, and we've been relatively flat for about the last five years, at about, uh, one point seven, one point eight million dollars for our machinery and tools tax. Merchants' capital, uh, we anticipate seeing about fifty thousand above what was budgeted this year and is upcoming budget year based on inventory, uh, within businesses in With County. Personal property tax is the next one, and as I mentioned, uh, the proposed budget does show a ten, a ten cent per hundred dollar value increase in the personal property tax. The next slide is a very busy slide and very difficult to read, and I will just, I'll highlight a couple. The red line is the, the tax rates, and it starts out showing the fifty-four cent tax rate in two thousand and six and seven, dropping down to forty-three, forty-four, and then ultimately forty-nine cents. The last red line on the right is showing the tax increase, uh, to fifty-two cents. The yellow line is showing the, the tax levy, uh, based on the last, uh, from two thousand and six up through two thousand and seven. The, uh, the, the increase, the red line does show the increase for the proposal of fifty-two cents per hundred dollars, uh, which is a three cent, which results in, uh, three cents from our current forty-nine cent tax increase. The next slide just shows a summary, I've been asked several questions of what the rates are for the, the tax rates of our surrounding localities, and, uh, just, uh, included those for presentation purposes to show the board those tax rates. And the final item, uh, this concludes my remarks, uh, as I said, in my budget recommendation in April. I do not take lightly the proposal of tax increases for With County. Uh, With County takes pride in continuing to have low tax rates that are beneficial to not only our citizens, but also to our recruitment of industries. Tonight, I look forward to the comments, recommendations, concerns raised by the citizens, and, uh, working with the board in the next few weeks to adopt the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. Uh, Dr. Perry, do you have a presentation on the school board budget?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, certainly appreciate the opportunity to come to you this evening. Basically, we do appreciate the support that the Board of Supervisors have demonstrated to the school division over the years, and certainly, this year, we had several increases locally that we had to adopt. We had a significant increase in our insurance premiums. We also had the VRS piece that we had to do, and then just the local, uh, or the other expenditures that we had. So we had close to eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars that we had to adopt, we asked the board for that amount, we got a hundred thousand dollars in the proposed budget, and then we absorbed the rest of that amount through just operational savings and some things that we did. So, we tried to do everything that we can in our power to ensure that we are responsible with the county's money, uh, and so we feel that the budget that we presented was one that was responsible, took care of the instructional needs, and would en, ensure that we could have good facilities and, and make sure that we had the instructional program protected. So, um, with that, with just the modest increase that we have of a hundred thousand dollars, we, we thought that was a responsible piece, and we did our share in terms of trying to make the rest of the budget work. As far as the capital improvement project is concerned, we've been working on that now with the Board of Supervisors for the last several months, and we're at the process that we sent Mr. Baer a copy of the resolution that we adopted this morning in terms of moving forward with the renovation of the high school project. So, if there are any specific questions, we'll certainly be willing to answer those, and, and as we presented to this board back when we gave our budget presentation, about seventy-two percent of our budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits, and so the majority of our budget is going toward people. If you were to take that seventy-two percent, nearly ninety-one percent of that is what we would classify as people in a classroom. So of our total operating budget, seventy-two percent is salaries and benefits, ninety-one percent of that is dedicated to teachers, guidance counselors, aides, principals, individuals within the building. So again, we feel like our budget represents the important part of what we do, is making sure that we have staff members take care of students and take care of the instructional program. So if you do have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Dr. Perry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we'll open up the floor for, uh, public comment. Uh, Mr. Willis will be calling your names, when you come up, please give your name and address. First person that signed up for tonight is Mr. Danny Gordon. Good evening, Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, thank you for this time. You know, over the past thirty-six years, pardon me, around retirement, from the radio station in December, I had covered this board for thirty-six years. So I've seen a lot of budgets come and go, tax increases, tax even going down, and a lot of discussions and consternation over different things. Fortunately, I've been happy to see over the years that the board, previous boards and school board and previous school boards have supported the schools above and beyond, as Mr. Baer has shown. We need good schools in the county, and the middle school, high school combination at Royal Tree and Ford Chisel has been great. I've heard no bad remarks about it, we've had no problems that I'm aware of during my news coverage, and it's a good idea. But in the process, Withville has been kind of overlooked. Now, one-third of the county's residents call Withville home, of which I am at twelve thirty-five West Spiller Street. I pay taxes on my house, I pay taxes on my cars and everything else. I pay taxes on my house, I pay taxes on my cars and everything else, and so if nothing else, it's Withville's turn. And so I think the best way to handle situation, all three schools which are in dire need, is the middle school, high school combination. But at the same time, I would hope that you would work with the school board to not only do the minimum, but think about doing solar panels on the school. We could pay for electricity and heating with solar panels. There is money called green technology schools at the state level that if you make a submission and they approve it and get your legislators behind it, there's money out there to put solar panels in and to make everything a white roof like it did at Gatorade, make everything more cost effective. So I'm asking not just to do the minimum, but just think about doing something that would allow our young people at all three schools to come in and learn about solar technology, maybe even put up one wind device out there and let them, because right now solar jobs, high-tech jobs are popping up everywhere, and if we want to attract jobs, we need to have the skill set. Now, I've had too many people from the hospital and college and other places tell me that they've tried to attract people here who had children, young children, and when they saw the status of Scott Memorial Middle School and Geordeth High School, they said, "No way," because they didn't want to send their, their children to private school. We've had people have done that in Withville because of the condition of the school. I went there in 1963, graduated in 1968, and basically it's the same school other than the band, I mean, the library and, and those few classrooms. Everything else is the same, the same murals. They took the mirrors down, the kids only have mirrors now to look in the bathrooms, so I don't know what happened to them, but they were there a few years ago. But it's a school that needs work, and this board and previous boards have always thought about our kids because we're all adults and some of us older than others, right, Gary?
You are.
And, and I'm not making light of that, but we need to think about the future. This community with Lot 24 and all the infrastructure you gentlemen have been so wise to do, we are going forward. And to go forward, our young people have to have the proper education. Why not do a green technology high school combination of the middle school? You take care of two schools' problems and you put us at the head of the class. I, I'm thrilled to see the SOL scores since Dr. Perry's come here. That's fantastic, and hopefully you appreciate that as much as I do. But we need to reach all areas of our school system. We've got great middle schools. We don't have a great middle school here in Withville, and middle school is old and recycled and recycled, and when they worked on it last time, we had the steam problem and it really ended up worse than when it started because I was over there and took the tour with Dr. Armentraut. Now, before I run out of time, I also want to remind you that the rescue squads, fire departments, and the sheriff's office need your support. You know, the Board of Supervisors previously did a tax increase specifically for the fire departments and on equipment. Great idea, wasn't, I think it was very similar to what we're talking about now. I've never had a disagreement with a tax that is going directed to something else designated to exactly something. So I want you to think about that. Rescue squads kind of got left out of that deal. As chairman of the With County Rescue Squad, we've been fortunate to get emergency grant because our equipment's falling apart, and we have a brand new vehicle to be here June 20th, and we are appreciative of that, but that's no county funds, that's all, all state funds. And so I want you to think about that and the sheriff's office as well, that you take all care of your employees there because we need strong law enforcement, strong schools, and strong rescue squads and fire departments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Danny.
Next person to sign up is Mr. Jack Weaver. Good evening, Mr. Weaver.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. It's been a while since I've had a chance to jump on you guys. I guess I would have to disagree with Mr. Gordon in many ways from the standpoint that I don't think you could ever raise taxes high enough to take care of all these things that, that has been proposed. I'm, I'm very much against an increase in taxes, and I'm against it because you have to look at your numbers. If there's any one number that I could leave with the audience and the board today, it's 1,000, 29,161. Now, 29,161 is a population of With County. What was the population in 2010? It was only 400 people more. So we're not in an increasing county, we're in a declining county. We're, we're in a declining also in, with children, and, and I do understand the need for schools. Let me tell you something, I'm, I'm a graduate of the brewery treat, and when I was in the first and second grade, we sat in the basement peeling insulation off of pipes that had asbestos all over them. But fortunately, we're all, we're all living, so I don't know if any of us are applying for asbestos assistance. But I think you can keep the buildings up. Maintenance is certainly important. But, but when you look at, when you look at this 29,121 people, you, you just read it, you're already $63 million in debt. You're going to put another 10 million on there. So 10, this is $70 million that 29,000 people are basically responsible for. Now, in that, you certainly have corporate citizens, but I disagree with some of these numbers because it's basically projections. It's what you think's going to happen, but that's not necessarily true. For example, corporations, they're in a constant declining situation because they're depreciating buildings, they're depreciating equipment, et cetera, and that goes down, but the costs go up. We all talk about Gatorade and all being a good citizen, I'm sure they are, but guess what? What are you getting out of them? You're basically only getting the taxes against their building and equipment, and you're getting wages from the, from the employees. Dog, I'm going to run out of time. Now, let's talk about this population we gave you. 20% of this population is made up of people 18 and under. The other 20%, there's 40% now, is made of 65 and over. Now, of these two groups, you're not going to get any increase in wages. They, they have no way to increase their incomes to keep paying for your increasing costs. And so all that can come out of is, is middle income people, but a lot, a lot of the good paying jobs are not in With County. If there's any one thing we need is to get industry in here. We do just need to spend money on industry, and, and we need to really concentrate on that because if you don't have people that's making good wages, you cannot pay taxes. And I skipped a few things here, but I would argue with most of these charts you just put up because I'm a numbers person. But right now, your school system is costing $11,169 to educate each child. $11,169. It's, I mean, it's just, are we getting that in return? I don't think so. We're talking about wage increases for all the employees. You've got eight people that's making $750,000. That's almost an average, time is up. That's almost $100,000 a piece, and you want to keep increasing wages. I know, like with Stephen, if somebody's going to get $1,000, that money should really go to Board of Supervisors because if anybody here doesn't get paid enough at you guys that you put in so much time, wish they had more time, that's what I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Next is Ms. Linda Myers.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Ms. Myers.
Pretty much telling you what I told you this morning. We've got to do something about our healthcare costs for our employees, for anybody working for the county, and I'm hoping that you will dive into that with other organizations or other co-ops in Virginia to do something about our healthcare costs. In the county budget on pages one, two, and three, that's only three separate departments, we're paying almost $100,000 just in life, in medical benefits and premiums, and that is really, really outrageous. Also, we, we really cannot afford the salary increases that you're proposing. These, all employees here have steady jobs, a great work environment, and so on, and recently, they all got benefits. They all got raises last year. We shouldn't be doing that again this year. There is no reason for it. And there's also, there's all the, those eight employees that are making almost three-quarters of a million dollars, those employees should definitely not be on any salary increases. That is just outrageous, and it's a slap in the face to the other people that are getting way, way less money in the county. So please, work on healthcare costs. That is a huge, huge thing for the county. We need, we really need to bring that down in some way, a cooperative. We're all straining under the, under the weight of healthcare costs, and we just, the, the general public cannot afford to keep picking up the employee compensations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Next on the list is Mr. James Armbrister. Good evening, Mr. Armbrister.
Good evening. James Armbrister, 2678 Fort Chisel Road, Max Meadows. I'm here representing Lead Mines Rescue Squad. As Mr. Gordon has already said, we're always in dire needs of money. We just can't seem to get enough to, to get by. I mean, we're, we're getting by, but that's all we're doing. We're not putting any money ahead for equipment or training or anything like that that, that will, might help us to continue in the years to come. Just a few points, this is kind of some of the same stuff I told everybody at the town hall meeting last week. We just celebrated 40 years of service to our community, which I think's a, a great thing, but to get 40 more years out of it, we're really going to have to put in some effort. We have 38 squad members, but out of 38, only 17 of those are volunteers. It's almost impossible to get volunteers these days that are qualified to do anything besides drive or perform basic first aid skills. They don't, you can't find anybody that has the time to work a full-time job and still take all the classes and training required to be EMTs or, you know, advanced personnel. We responded to 1,281 calls last year. We traveled about 50,000 miles, which averages a 39 miles per call, which is, you know, way yonder more, I'm sure, than anybody else in the county. We, out of all the calls we ran, 60% of those calls were billable calls. Billable, collectible is two different things. You know, we can bill for them, but whether we collect anything is another matter. So that left 40% of our calls as non-billable, which are standbys or aid, aid assist, you know, that kind of thing, that people refuse service once we get there, they feel better. Most of our payroll is our biggest expense. You know, we spent over $222,000 last year in payroll, which amounts to about 62% of our expenses. You know, we can't, as in any other business, payroll's always the biggest expense. We spent over $18,000 in vehicle maintenance, you know, so we're, all, all I'm saying really is, is we need help from the county to help us get ahead, stay ahead, and try to put some money aside for equipment, future, and whatever. If you'll include that, try to include that in your budget, we would sure appreciate it, and I'm sure the citizens on our end of the county would. They, they deserve and deserve better service than what, anything we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Next is Mr. Jeff Leinhardt.
Good evening, Mr. Leinhardt.
Hello. Thank you for having me here and the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Leinhardt, 3119 Millers Creek Road, Max Meadows, Virginia. I'd like to start out by saying you guys have a tough choice. You need to decide whether we need more revenue. There's a lot of things that point that yes, we do. There's a lot of points that say maybe we don't. But I guess to help further the toughness of your decisions here that are going to be coming on this budget issues is you've got to consider all the ramifications from your decisions here. If you do raise taxes, will that be what the county needs? If you turn it down, is that what the county needs? And I'd like to start talking on that point of if you were to turn it down, where will the money come from for all the other services county provides for our citizens other than schools? I think the numbers reflect that we will be able to finance the schools with the capital improvements, but with little to nothing left over for all the other services, a lot of which are provided for the children of this county, not just adults. Also, it'll, where will the revenue come for those programs? Will we borrow it? If we do, who do we borrow it from? Ourselves, our unattached funds that we have in the county? Those, those funds also provide a wonderful, wonderful bond rating for us. I'd like you to consider the fact if we do pay down our reserve funds, our credit rating will go up. Every quarter point of our reserve funds that would drop would bring on increase in bond rating, or drop in bond rating, excuse me. That works out to about 655,000 on our current debt load right now, every year, for one quarter point. I know I'm not helping you make your decision, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of the ramifications of which direction you take. Revenue does need to be increased. It always does. I think what you're asking for in the, I believe it was 9% in the general assessment, how is that in keeping with the other counties surrounding us? I do believe that's well within the parameters of probably the lowest third taxed counties in the state of Virginia. We're still low. I'm not advocating that you vote for a tax increase. I'm also looking down the road as what alternatives do we have? Long-term, our debt load will go up, whether we add to it or not, just in the fact that our bond rating will go up if we do not budget enough money every year to cover our operating expenses and not dip into our unattached funds, I guess. That's all I have to say, and I wish you luck in your decisions, and they're tough, and hopefully you'll get at least 51% that agree with you. That's the best you can hope for, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Leinhardt.
Next is Mr. Rusty Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Good evening. I'm Rusty Jones, 1040 Reed Creek Mill Road or 1590 Church Street, depending on what the street sign says today. We'll go with 1040 Reed Creek Mill Road. Like a lot of the other people, I, I would like to compliment both organizations, the Board of Supervisors and the school board. Y'all have really tough jobs. I think Virginia creates a unique situation in that the school board is tasked with coming up with wants and needs, and then in the end, the Board of Supervisors though have to get the real fun part, figuring out how to pay for it all and what can be afforded in the balance of the overall county budget. So it's not an easy task, and no one should ever pretend it is. I would, I would say this, I'm obviously here to speak on behalf of, of what I think we need to be looking at with our school programs and particularly with our buildings and the capital program. I've spoken at some public meetings, but not before y'all. So one thing that I've kind of come to after thinking about this is I'm a little concerned we may be looking at this from the wrong perspective. I keep hearing people talk about that this is the last step in the renovation phases and that this is Withville's turn and all this kind of stuff. And I would like us to consider repositioning our perspective and think about this looking forward as the beginning step to what we've got to do going forward. Because what we've done in the past, there's, you know, is done. But we can't sit here today and think about only Withville. And that may come as a surprise coming from a Withville guy, particularly George With alumni. But I do think we need to, to start looking forward. In my occupation, I deal with a lot of analysis of all kinds of economics and companies and stuff, and I know there's some industry leaders here tonight. The job displacement we've seen in the last 10 or 20 years is nothing compared to what's coming. Machines are building machines, and machines are going to run themselves. So we're in trouble if we do not adopt systems and facilities that will take care of what we need to do to train the next generation of people. we need to do to train the next generation of people because the jobs are going to be very different. I guess what I would also like to say is if we spend ten million now, then what? And I keep asking this question, and I don't really get an answer. You know, Fort Chisel High School is up the road and just down the road from major needs of its own. We're going to no sooner turn around... Well, I could argue Fort Chisel needs as bad now as George with. I think most people down that way would agree with. Rural Retreat is the beneficiary of a more recent renovation cycle, but inevitably that'll come around too. We have three segments in our county that kind of we address. I mean, as they say, the Friday night lights are either maroon, gold, or orange, and I really like that. I think that's a hallmark of our community. I think it helps all three sections of our county have... Uh-oh. Have a good perspective. But what I would say is this, is when we get to those future years, are we going to be able to afford to have all three of these school systems going? And you better think about it because we box ourselves in a corner, we may end up facing consolidation of high schools and things like that that nobody wants. I would say the one way not to have that happen is to focus and make certain you consolidate George with and Scott now in a proper way. If we have all three middle school, high school combination campuses with segregation properly for the age groups, I think that'll keep us from eventually having to get forced into financially possibly having to consolidate the high school system. And I would say that I would really like to see us have a consensus between the school board and the board of supervisors of a long-range plan where we're standing here today looking forward, and we predict what's going to be happening for all three segments, Withfield area, Fort Chisel area, and Rural Retreat area. We put it in a long-range plan, and then we decide if we're going to tax and how we're going to spend. That's my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Next up, Mr. Joe Razor.
Good evening, Mr. Razor.
Good evening. My name's Joe Razor, one-oh-five Chaney Branch Road, Crockett. I was here to talk about the tax rate increases. Our land use rates have recently gone up, and now it's proposed that our personal property and real estate taxes, estate taxes, to go up. I'm a beef cattle producer, and as many of you know, it takes a large acreage to make a living raising beef cattle, and I feel that we pay a large amount in the taxes for our county. Yet, since about two thousand and fourteen, our income has been cut by probably about a third, and along with that, we've faced significant rises in our health insurance premiums. And most of the open land in Withfield County is grazing land, and I think I speak for probably a lot of beef producers. Cattle run on this land, so the beef people have faced major drops in their income, yet we're going to be paying larger taxes. And people say it's only a few cents here and there, but where does it end? Our freedoms are being eroded away a few cents at a time, and our freedom to do with our income as we want, not what the government dictates. Therefore, I feel there has to be a stand, or we're all going to be buried by a government that is taxing us to death. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Razor.
Last name signed up is Mr. David Blessing.
Good evening, Mr. Blessing.
How you doing, there? My name's David Blessing. I'm five-hundred Ball Tree Road, Withfield, Virginia, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come down there and speak to you seven gentlemen, including Stephen. And I do know that at this point in time, you know, y'all wanting to consolidate the school, you know, build a new school according to what I understand. And we hear Mr. Weaver talk about the declining of the population, declining of the jobs, and if you go out through our community, you see that pay is not really that great, our economy's not really that great, and I can't understand why in the world. And y'all going to have to make these decisions, seven y'all, whether to do what the school board want you to do or maintain these buildings. And Mr. Hale, I talked to him about it, and he said these buildings that we've got is good buildings. If you go around and look at your old houses versus your new houses, which is still standing, most of your old houses is they was better built. The school up at Rural Retreat y'all just built, they tell me, the janitors, that it leaks every time it rains. Now, I don't know whether there's anything to that, but I understand that. And the quality's not there as it is in these old buildings. And if you go back to the track record of where the school boards are coming to, look to the previous county where they... He come from, and we can see what kind of shape we in there. And we do not want Withfield County in that kind of shape our board of supervisors, we really don't. I'm a taxpayer too, and I don't have a money tree to go out there and pick it off every time I want something. And I think this is not a good time in order to do that. I think we need to maintain our buildings. And, you know, the decline of the students for the last thirteen years is declining, and like the rest of them say, you know, we need to look out for our county and our own benefit. And board of supervisors, you look out for my benefit, and everybody else pays these taxes. Because some of these people comes and goes. We stay, and we got to pay the taxes, and we got to inherit that debt. So as y'all seven guys, y'all going to make that decision here in the next few days, I don't know when it is, but y'all realize that we going to have to be burden of the debt. And, you know, I just appreciate the time, and, you know, I'm old-school. I know new stuff is nice, but how long does it last? I had a house that I live in, and the wood boards got in it and tore it almost, about eat it up, Gene. But what did I do? I didn't have the money to go and buy me a new one. I went and under and I jacked it up, maintained it, got it fixed up. We going to live in it, and I think we can do the same thing with these buildings there. And I just appreciate the time and opportunity to come down, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blessing. Okay, that was the last individual that signed up for citizens time, but I will ask if anyone else would like to speak during citizens time. Hearing none, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. You know, it does us a great deal of good to hear the comments from the public, what y'all are feeling. I know we do get out in the communities and we talk to people, and we get phone calls for citizens all over the county, but participating in local government, you know, is a tremendous benefit to us. And I will open the floor up to any board member that would like to speak or say anything. And hearing none, I will close the public hearing.